Good morning, everyone. It is now nine o'clock, and I ask that you please join me and stand for the invocation to be given by Pastor Eastwood, who's one of our police chaplains, and please do remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
I have to follow, we want to thank you for this day. We want to thank you, Lord, we woke up and was able to get up. We want to thank you, Lord, that we have the ability to speak and to hear and to see today, and we have a mind that can make decisions, Lord, and we just pray every decision that's made here today is led by you. We pray for the power of your Holy Spirit that unites us as one. And we want to thank you, Lord, for the freedom that we have to pray in our country and in our county and in our towns. We want to thank you, Lord, for the great job that all of our leaders do in every area of service in this county, and, Lord, we want to thank you that they recognize the need of prayer to lead us in the day that we live. And, Lord, we know that there'll be a lot of decisions made today, a lot of folks will be expressing their opinions and expressing their beliefs, Lord, and what they think is right. But, Lord, we pray that each and every one of us will seek the leadership of your Spirit that unites us, Lord, and we trust you for your oracles of deity, that you speak to our hearts and minds about the right things to do. And, Lord, we want to thank you for our country and all the blood that's been shed through the years, that we might have the freedom to meet like this and make decisions and vote and let people know our opinions and our beliefs. Lord, we don't ever want to take that for granted. Most of all, Jesus, we want to thank you this morning that, one day on Calvary's Hill, that you paid the price, you with supreme sacrifice that defeated death, hell, and the grave, and rose again, and you're seated at the right hand of the Father, Lord, in the seating for us today, and we thank you for that. We thank you for your salvation. We thank you for your Spirit that abides in the hearts of every believer, Lord, and we pray, as we have this meeting today, that all we say and do, Lord, are to be led by you. And we pray, Lord, as we go out of this building, may we realize this is a day that you have made for us, and we are to rejoice and be glad in it, Lord. And thank you for that blessing that we have of life where we can express, Lord, the benefits and all the blessings of knowing you as personal, Lord, and Savior. For we pray, and ask this, in your precious and holy magnificent name, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America in terms of the republic which extends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and again, welcome to today's Board of Commissioners meeting. I am now hereby calling this meeting to order. So at this point, are there any changes or revisions to the agenda?
Yes, I would, Chair, I would like to recommend that we remove the agenda item referencing the District Two rezoning off of the agenda.
Okay, and is that item fifteen A RZ nineteen twenty-two the reservoir group?
Correct.
Okay. So we have a request to have that removed from the agenda? All in favor?
Chair Wood?
Yes.
I apologize. On the S D S items, can we make that for discussion only?
Okay, so that is item sixteen A.
Sixteen A, yes, ma'am.
So discussion only for item sixteen A regarding the resolution of the service delivery strategy, and then a removal for the public hearing of the reservoir group of RZ nineteen twenty-two. So at this time, we'll take each of these items separately to vote upon, so those in favor of removing item fifteen A from the reservoir group public hearing RZ nineteen twenty-two, will you please vote in favor? All in favor? Okay, so that one will be removed. We'll now, regarding the item on sixteen A regarding the resolution to approve the service delivery strategy, to change that from a resolution to approve to a discussion item. All in favor? Okay, so the agenda will be amended as stated. Planning and zoning item, public hearing RZ nineteen twenty-two has been removed. Yes.
Do you need to make a motion in a second, or are you?
Yeah, I'm just. And then I'm going to call back for a full vote, okay? Thank you. And so we've had a interim vote, because I wanted to treat these separately so that we can make sure that we're clear. And then, so we did get unanimous approval to remove the item RZ nineteen twenty-two regarding the public hearing. The one that was requesting a rezoning from RA to residential suburban at one fifteen fifty-five Chambers Road in District Two has been removed from the agenda. And then also the service delivery strategy item sixteen A, which was a resolution to approve, was approved for a discussion only, so at this time, we'll now hold a vote for the full amendment of the agenda. So all in favor of those changes, please vote.
Chair, I need a motion in a second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to make those changes.
I'd like to move to accept the agenda as changed.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate the clarification since I'm changing the process. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, and I appreciate that clarification, because again, I want to treat these separately so that we can be clear going forward, so thank you for the clarification on that. Okay, so we've now accepted the agenda. We're now moving to the next item and ask our county manager to please proceed forward to discuss the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting.
Good morning, Chair and Board members.
Good morning.
It is with pleasure that I stand before the board and recognize the Henry County Financial Services Team. As you all are aware, over the last twelve months, our team has been very busy with the multitude of tasks, including not only an audit that you're going to hear about right after this presentation, but also a conversion to our new ERP system, and then also ensuring that all of our county financials are being handled. Well, this morning, I would like to recognize the finance team for receiving the following The Government Finance Officers Association awards a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to Henry County, Georgia, for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. This achievement recognizes those local governments that go beyond the minimum requirements of generally in accepted accounting principles to prepare a comprehensive annual financial report that evidences the spirit of not only transparency but full disclosure. Henry County's financial services team is being recognized for succeeding in achieving this goal. Our financial services team not only includes our finance department, but also our grants, our budget, and our procurement departments, and we do have representatives here this morning to receive the award. And then finally, we also received an award from the Government Finance Officers Association, and is an award for outstanding achievement in popular annual financing report. Again, this award recognizes those local governments that extract information from their comprehensive annual financial report to produce high-quality, popular annual financial reports specifically designed to be readily accessible and easily understandable to the general public and other interested parties without a background in public finance. So again, this morning, please join me in congratulating our financial service team, who's under the leadership of Mr. David Smith and his entire staff, and just really, really elated that our team was able to receive both of these awards today. At this time, I'll turn it over to the board, and I'll ask that those team members come forth for a picture with the board.
Well, we thank you, and as the team members are coming forward and the board is coming down for the picture, we do want to recognize the finance team, because we've received this award almost every year. And again, we appreciate what you're doing, again, to highlight that we were even moved to a triple-A bond rating status, and we again want to applaud you all for all the work that you do to bring historical value and financial value to our county. So thank you, and we'll join you here for the picture. So thank you again. So again, we appreciate our finance team as a heart back out to work, and as many of you know that after the meeting today, we will have begin our budgeting process, and we invite you to join us with them as well. So thank you again, we appreciate that. We'll now move into our next update, which will be, we invite up Mr. Miller Edwards with Malden and Jenkins to come and discuss the twenty nineteen comprehensive annual financial report, which we were just celebrating, and to hear more details about that, so welcome this morning.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I appreciate you all having me here today. I've got a presentation, slideshow, PowerPoint to kind of summarize the audit. I don't think you want me to go through all one hundred and sixty-eight pages. Now, if you do, I'll be happy to go through all of it. But as Sherri was just mentioning, this has been a good year for the finance department. You've got some good people, they work very hard. This CAFER that you have here today is the sixteenth time, I believe, you all have put together this CAFER. You've received the award from the GFOW every time you've submitted. That's a great thing, so. With that being said, let me keep on rolling on. Just a little bit about who we are. With me today, I've also got a fellow partner that actually lives here in Henry County that helps us on this engagement. This is Doug Moses. Doug, you've lived here since what?
Two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five. Again, he's a partner with us as well, he's got over twenty years' experience. I've got about thirty-three years' experience, just short of thirty-four, actually. All we do, the two of us, is work with local governments, by the way. Don't ask me a ten forty question, I will not be able to answer it for you. Going forward with the presentation today, I'm here again to kind of cover the general perspective of the audit, what was the good, bad, the ugly, that type of thing, and just see if any questions that you may have during the course of it. Additionally, a little bit about who we are, we've actually got eight offices across the southeast. I'm out of the Macon office, Doug is out of our Atlanta office, even though he lives here. We serve also a great deal of governments, we've got about four hundred and eighty governments that we serve, about fifty-five of those are county governments. Examples of some of those county governments that we serve would include places like Gwinnett County, DeKalb, Forsyth County, Richmond County, Bibb County, Chatham County, Rockdale County, just a lot of those kind. You all are right in the middle of that breadbasket, you're right in the middle of that big group of people right there, those eighteen that I've mentioned. As far as the audit itself, the number one thing that you want to hear from your auditor is, hey, what's the good, the bad, the ugly? What's your opinion of everything? Our opinion is a clean opinion, what we call in our world an unmodified opinion, meaning that we do believe this financial report that has been provided to you all does indeed present fairly in all material respects, financial position, the results of operations, and all disclosures relative to generally accepted county principles that are required. You have done that here with this document. Additionally, part of what we have to also do, when you get federal funds, like most counties your size do, we have to do a special audit called a single audit. We had about six point two million of federal funds run through here this past year. We had to test the SAFER grant, which was about one and a half million dollars' worth, and I'm happy to tell you that we were able to give you a clean opinion on your compliance of federal guidelines. That is not always easy to do, because the rules of the game with the federal government, it changes every day. You've got to dot i's and cross t's, and the rules can change tomorrow, what i's and what t's to dot and cross. So you all did a very fine job there as well this year. We've just had the presentation by Sherri about the CAFER, and I've already alluded to the fact that you all have got it for sixteen years. I do want to go forward with emphasizing how indeed this is important. I heard somebody make reference to the fact that you all now have gotten the triple-A rating. All that comes from a variety of things, not just your economics and those kind of things, but the ability to stand behind such a productive and concise document that gives you so much information. This document gives you ten years' worth of information. If you want to look back and see, well, how did we do this year compared to two thousand and eleven, it's in here. So it's a very, all it comes in comparative document. I know not everybody in this room is an accountant, and not everybody gets into it like I do, but it is a very good document for those who want to understand more about the county's finances. And when you look at bond rating people, that's what a lot of it's about, is looking at documents of this kind. So again, hats off to the county for doing just that. Again, to talk about the overview of everything, it's important for everybody to understand what's included in this particular document. It's not just the Board of Commissioners's office. All of your elected officials, your tax commissioners, your sheriff, your clerk of court, all those type of parties are included. Your pension plan is included, your other post-employment benefit plans are included. You've got component units, like your Board of Health, your library, and your water sewer authority, they're all included. So it's a big giant umbrella that really represents this county as a whole, that ultimately has to report back and be a part of this greater government. To give you some numbers of what things look like, if you look at what's on this particular slide, the primary government is what we have in this room here today for the most part. That's, again, your general fund, your SPOLOs funds, all the activities that come under the heading of Henry County. You've got about nine hundred and twenty-six million dollars' worth of assets in that arena. You've got another four hundred and seventy-eight million dollars' worth of assets over in your component units, the biggest one, of course, being the water sewer. You've got capital assets included in there as well, and you can see that little smaller line there, but in overall aggregate, this place is one point four billion dollars' worth of assets, of which about one billion of that is your infrastructure, your hard assets, your buildings, your vehicles, your fleets, your, everything that's hard, meaning you've got other financial assets of about four hundred million. In that four hundred million is about a hundred and fifty million dollars' worth of cash and investments at the county, and about another hundred and thirty million over in your component units. You've got net position, which we might call equity in this world, of about two, a total of nine hundred and ninety-three million dollars. That's because you've only got liabilities of four eleven. Those liabilities are, again, in your component units, where the water authority has a lot of revenue bonds, you all have your own liabilities. You've got pension and your other post-employment benefits liabilities, that adds up to about a hundred and forty, a hundred and thirty million dollars' worth of long-term liabilities. But again, it's a big balance sheet. When you look at this whole network of things and look at what's under the umbrella here, this is a big operation. Again, one point four billion dollars' worth of assets. Revenues, if you look at across the board on the revenues, you're about two hundred and twenty-seven million here at the county, your component units have about ninety-four million, for a total of three hundred and twenty-one million dollars' worth of revenues. Your expenses across the board are about two hundred and eighty-two million, your change was about thirty-nine million, your change being your bottom line. Now, if you look at the primary government column, which is, again, is what you all work with day to day, your general fund, SPOLOs, and all those kind of things, you look at that first column, it comes down to that change of twenty-three million, and many people out in the world might say, why would the government be wanting to have a bottom line of twenty-three million? Well, the next slide attempts to give you a little bit of a background, how important it is to have a good bottom line. When you look at the twenty-three million that we just talked about a moment ago, if you add back depreciation, which is a non-cash flow expense, it gives you about forty-nine million dollars available to you to do certain things with, certain things like purchase capital assets to the tune of thirty-two million, to pay down a long-term debt of about eleven million. You utilize resources of about forty-three million when you look at that bottom line. That gave you a surplus for the future of about six million, and people might say, well, do we need the six million? Well, if you look at inflation, that six million is about two and a half percent of your revenues. And when you think about the way inflation's been over the last few years, a two and a half percent increase in your surplus is right where you ought to be. So to me, this really looks very good, it looks very reasonable, and again, this is there to help people understand why it is important to have a strong bottom line, because the bottom line is what you have to use to invest in yourself and to pay off your debts. If you go back home to your own lives, you might make an income, but you've still got to pay for the mortgage, you've got to still put a new roof on, you've still got to replace the car, all those things are what we have going on right here, and you've got to have a bottom line to do that. So that's what I attempt to show you right here. Another thing to look at is the general fund itself. Of course, the general fund's the heart and soul of any government, it's the same as the case here. Your general fund had about a hundred and sixty-four million dollars' worth of revenues this past year. Of those revenues, about fifty-four percent were property taxes, so look at that big slice of that pie, that red slice, that's your property tax, and how important they are. Additionally, the little orange slice is your sales tax, is about nineteen percent. So just those two alone are about seventy-three percent of the revenues of the general fund, again emphasizing how important those two revenue streams are. When you go to the expenditures of the general fund, the expenditures this past year were about a hundred and fifty million. Let me also say one thing, kudos to you all, you actually did very well this year with your budget. When you look at your budget, you had budgeted to spend an additional eleven million, but you all pulled in the belt strap, you tightened things up, and you spent less than budgeted by eleven million dollars to come in at about a hundred and fifty million instead of about a hundred and sixty-one million. But of that hundred and fifty million, fifty-eight percent of that was in public safety. That is not unusual. A government of this size and nature, when you've got police, sheriff, and fire, and a growing dynamic that you have here, that is about what I expect to see public safety be, is about fifty-eight percent. But again, that emphasizes how important that is and how significant that is to your overall expenditures of the general fund. Going on to look at another graph, another chart, what this attempts to do in blue is your revenues, and yellow is your expenditures for the last six years. Back in two thousand and fourteen, you actually had revenues that were short of all these expenditures. Over the last five years, you've had a positive each year. The blue is a little bit bigger than the yellow. That's a good thing, that's a sign of having the funds to invest in yourself. And you know, we were talking earlier about why you need that six million dollar bottom line? Notice how the yellow bars keep going up. We have to have the funds in our pocket to proceed into the next year and not wait on the seasonality of our revenue stream. You know, you think about the fifty-four percent of your revenues were property taxes, when do you collect property taxes? For the most part, it's going to be in the fall. So you've got to have the ability to sustain during July, August, September, on into October, and that's why you've got to have those surplus funds to be able to keep going with your initiatives without having to slow down for the seasonality. So again, this to me demonstrates a lot of good things going on here, your revenues and your expenditures are growing, which your revenues are staying just ahead of it. This also demonstrates the same thing. If you look on this particular graph, those same six years are being looked at, and back, again, six years ago, you had to use your surplus to the tune of about seven hundred thousand, but over the five years that followed, you've been able to invest about thirty-seven million back into fund balance. That is awesome, that is great. You think about where we were as a county back when we came out of the recession, we had to utilize some of our fund balance during that five-year period, from about oh-seven to twelve. You all have done a fine job of reinvesting back into yourself and growing your fund balance to prepare yourself for contingencies and for the future growth and plans that you have here. It's a good place to be. This also demonstrates the relationship of fund balance to your expenditures, and why fund balance is so important. Notice your expenditures are going up. Back six years ago, they were around a hundred and sixteen million, they've grown to be just short of one fifty. Fund balance back then was forty-two eight, now it's grown to be eighty. It's been growing parallel with the growth of expenditures. Again, that's the right way to make things happen. Another thing I like to talk about when I look at fund balance is the coverage that it provides to you. You heard me mention a moment ago about the need for fund balance to get you through July, August, September, October. Well, those are four months right there, that's a hundred and twenty days. You all had, at the end of the year, about a hundred and eighty-eight days' worth of fund balance. Now, before we get too excited about that, some of that fund balance has already been designated and committed for other things. It's not like it's free and clear and unassigned and available for everything, but when you just look at the big picture, you do have a strong fund balance, you have a good fund balance to be at. This, again, is one of the reasons why you are triple-A rated now, is to be able to demonstrate that you have the capacity to do all the things that your community wants you to do and be able to do it very proactively. You have other funds as well, I've been talking more about the general fund, you've got a lot of special revenue funds, you've got some debt service funds, you've got capital products funds, you've got enterprise funds, primarily your airport and your golf course, and then you've got all those fiduciary funds I alluded to early on in this presentation, tax commissioner, sheriff, clerk of courts, all those kind of places, they're also included in here. Another thing that we have to do, you heard me talk about the single audit, and I gave you a thumbs up on the single audit, we were able to give you a clean opinion. We also have to look at your ability to have good internal controls and your general approach to following all laws and regulations that are pertinent to the county. We do have one finding this year, I will touch on it here, it was how accounting for the group insurance. A year ago, I recommended to you all that we consider moving that out of the respective funds and let it be its own standalone fund for group health insurance and what we call in our world an internal service fund. I strongly encourage you further to do that again this year. I'm not saying that you're doing it wrong, but we did have some errors this past year that we found during the audit, because it's so mingled up with all the other funds, it's hard for management to really manage and monitor what's going on with group health. It's a big component of all the operations here by department. My recommendation here, under this finding, is that we move that to a separate fund, an internal service fund, where you can better identify, monitor, and manage that particular component of your operations. You've got a lot of things going on there, and this is a very volatile operation, you have good years and you have bad. This will be able to pull it out of the general fund, for example, and be able to have the general fund not show such volatility and be able to monitor it separately from everything else. Again, this is a very encouraging finding that we're trying to provide to you today. Additionally, as I conclude, I want to just let you know there are a lot of new standards coming out the door, there are some that are going to affect the county, having to do with things like leases. Right now, every government has leases, has the tenant or the landlord, it's the nature of the beast. Many of your leases don't meet the standard for capitalizing, putting on the balance sheet to today, but the standards are about to change to where you're going to have to look back at all your leases that you've got that are active right now and determine what leases need to be capitalized and put on your balance sheet. Management is aware of this, I want to let you know that it's coming. It will change the look of your balance sheet somewhat, depending on the nature and the size of these leases, but that's coming out there as well. Fiduciary activities is another one that's coming out there, we're going to have to be looking at your fiduciary activities, again, the sheriff, the pension plans, the tax commissioner, we're going to have to change the way we report those in the future. There's actually going to be an income statement going forward on all those that we currently don't have under the current standards, so that will change how your financial reporting will look. That will change with June thirtieth, twenty, this year that we're now in. But I wanted to let you all know that's coming. Outside of that, I want to make sure you know that we do prepare a lot of newsletters to our clients, we also provide quarterly continuing education to our clients. You all are always welcome to be a part of that. If you ever want to be on our mailing list, just let us know, let management here know. You already have people receiving the invites here at management, and you're always welcome to join them or anyone else from the county to come to our quarterly sessions. In your case, we always have something in Macon and Atlanta, so you can go either direction. We do these things four times per quarter, and I want to make sure you knew about that. Outside of that, I'm here today to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, but I'll see if the board has any other questions or comments. Okay, well, just a couple of things. If you could go back to slide twelve, you were speaking about the amount of expenditures, and you highlighted that fifty-eight percent were directed of our expenditures to public safety, and I'm just curious, at some point in time, you may not be able to have that number now, but we also have judiciary that is highlighted on that slide, and to me, that is part of public safety as well. But anyways, if you can speak to that, don't worry about it, but again, I consider all of that part of public safety.
And I understand. In the world of GASP, the party that puts together the standards we have to follow, they believe that judicial is separate, but I know and I agree with what you're saying overall. To me, it's all part of the big picture, but the way they look at it is, public safety is going to be firing police. But the way they look at it is public safety is going to be firing police, and judicial is like a whole nother branch of activity and function, so they like that to be kept separately.
Well, I'll just wait till the popular report comes out, because I know it does break down all of the details by percentages for each of our revenues and expenditures. So when can we expect this to?
Yes, we have that available to distribute to the board now, so we can get that to you before the end of the meeting.
Okay. And then I do understand, as you've stated, that this report is available on the website as well, so we should have that available. Okay, well, again, I appreciate the feedback. I do want to hear from staff, as you made the recommendation regarding the group health being separated. How are we planning to respond to that, especially since it's the second year of recommendation?
So Chair Wood, we actually had a meeting with our broker on yesterday, and this was part of the conversation in terms of carrying that liability that we've been noted through our auditors on. So we've already started talking to the broker and making them aware that we're definitely going to have to set it up as a separate fund. I think David and his team's going to work towards that and certainly next year during the audit. I don't believe that we'll get any dings on that, because we're going to move forward with separating that out.
Okay, all right. Okay, and my last comment is that I carry this report with me oftentimes, especially when I'm outside meetings, and especially ACCG has really appreciated Henry County doing this, because not many counties have this to present and to paint their picture about who they are and more importantly, about their financial status. So I do want to commend the staff again for all that they've done to make this more transparent, and it tells our story for us as well. So again, if there's nothing else for the good of the board, then we appreciate you and thank you for coming.
Thank you. We appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you. We're now moving to our county managers' comments, and so we ask that you please come forward now.
Baker's next, the presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got to get my little self-focused here. Okay, I skipped over the transportation part of it. And I know this is something that definitely we're all interested, especially our citizens. So thank you again for helping me to stay focused today. So we invite Mr. Sam Baker, our new Director of Transportation Planning, to give us a transportation planning update for here in Henry County. Looks like we need some technical assistance here.
Good morning. I'm pleased to come before you for the first time. I am Sam Baker. I'm the newly hired Director of Transportation Planning in the newly created Department of Transportation Planning. I started in December. I have been here exactly two months and two days. Commissioner Thomas suggested that I come before you and introduce myself. She suggested that I share with you what I think Henry County should do from a transportation planning standpoint and seek input from you, what you want to see done, what your expectations are. And she further suggested that I come before you at least once every quarter and give you an update. What is going on in Henry County in transportation planning and/or implementation of a transportation plan? And I plan to do just that. So I have a brief presentation for you today. But before I get into this presentation, there is something I want to say to you. And that is, as far as I know, at this time, Henry County is the one and only local government that has created and now has a Department of Transportation Planning. As far as I know, no other government has such a department. Your action speaks volumes. It says that transportation planning is important in Henry County. It says that transportation planning is important enough to have its own department. So for whatever it's worth, I just want to take one moment to congratulate you, the board, and the county management for your bold action. Coming here from Hall County, I must tell you, it's a big deal. So I just wanted to say this to you. So now that you have created this new Department of Transportation Planning and hired a new director, I want to make sure that this department fulfills for which you created it. So I have some ideas, some suggestions that I want to share with you, what I think that we should do. But I'm also here to listen to you, what you want to see done and what your expectations are. So with that, let's get started. So there are four things that I want to talk about today. They are, number one, update the two thousand and sixteen Henry County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Number two, update the two thousand and sixteen Henry County Transit Plan. Number three, develop a first-ever Henry County Trails Plan. And number four, consider TDM strategies. And I'm going to expand on that in just a minute. So Henry County developed a comprehensive transportation plan back in two thousand and sixteen. Since then, there have been a lot of changes. One of the changes is that the Henry County's population has grown a lot. And the way I see a transportation plan, it's a transportation planner's equivalent of a doctor's blood test or an X-ray. It gives us an assessment of how our transportation infrastructure is doing right now and going forward, what projects we should undertake to meet the needs of this growing community. So in October of two thousand and nineteen, Henry County submitted a number of projects to the Atlanta Regional Commission for Funding. I discovered that a number of those projects are not in Henry County's transportation plan, and that is a problem. It is a problem because in about nineteen, twenty counties are competing for a limited amount of funds. And when we submit a project to ARC and ask them, "Give us money", the very first question ARC asks is, "Is this project in your transportation plan? Yes or no?" And if the answer is yes, good, what's next? If the answer is no, it puts us in a less competitive position compared to the other counties around us. So if the plan is not meeting our needs, I think updating the plan and coming up with an updated transportation project list would put us in a more competitive position next time there's a tip solicitation from the Atlanta Regional Commission. So Atlanta Regional Commission, in fact, suggested that we consider updating our CTP. And they said that five hundred thousand dollars is available from the Atlanta Regional Commission. To access this money, we need to come up with a twenty percent local match, which is one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, regarding this one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar amount, I believe that Henry County should not be footing this bill on its own. In my last position, I helped Jackson County update its comprehensive transportation plan. The Jackson County government invited and involved its cities in the transportation planning process. And in return, the Jackson County cities shared the cost of the transportation plan update based on their share of the county's population. I believe we should do the same in Henry County by inviting Stockbridge, McDonough, Locust Grove, and Hampton in the planning process. But in return, ask them to share their share of the local match based on their population share of Henry County's population. Next, Henry County Transit Plan. We developed a transit plan back in two thousand and sixteen. Since then, there has been one big change. And that big change is there is a new agency in town. It is called the Atlanta Transit Link Authority. It's a big agency. Any Henry County transit projects for which we want federal or state money, it has to be in ATL's Regional Transit Plan. And every year, ATL asks for, "What transit projects do you want funding for?" So to submit projects for funding, we need to come up with our own game plan, what we want to see implemented. So I think it would be a good idea to update our two thousand and sixteen Transit Plan. We had a conversation with our Budget Director, Angie Soro. She told us that there is local funds available and there is federal funds available from the Federal Transit Administration as well. So next month, in March, our Transit Director, Ty Salters, will come before you to request your approval to spend the local match to update the transit plan. But I'm here simply giving you a heads up that I am supportive of a transit plan update and that this is something that we should do. Henry County Transit Trails Plan. When we did the two thousand and sixteen Comprehensive Transit Plan, Comprehensive Transportation Plan, that plan provided this map on the left with some concepts for trails. And then it specifically recommended that Henry County develop a county-wide trails plan. The county has never developed such a trails plan. So I was at the groundbreaking ceremony of the Panola Mountain Greenwood Trail, and I was extremely pleased to hear Commissioner Holmes talk about that we should develop a county-wide trails plan. And if I'm not mistaken, I saw Chair Wood and Commissioner Clemens applaud at that statement. So the impression I got is half of the commissioners are on board with the idea. Now, the other half, if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer. It's great that we are constructing the Panola Mountain Greenwood Trail. We need to build more such trails. And to do that, we need to come up with a trails plan. Recently, I was at a regional trails roundtable at the Atlanta Regional Commission. It's a good place to see what others are doing in the region and how we stack up. So over there, I shared with them that we have started constructing this trail, Panola Mountain and State Parkway, and they gave me kudos. But I also observed something. And what I observed is that, if you don't mind my saying so, we are a little behind compared to the other counties in trails planning and construction. The other counties have developed a trails plan, and they have come up with a logo. Yes, a logo that goes on their trailheads, on their bicycle parking racks, on the trash cans, on the chairs, on the wayfinding signs along their trails, and identify them as part of a county-wide trails network. We should develop a cool-looking logo with the name for Henry County Trails, and that should be part of a Henry County Trails Plan. So for this, I'm requesting one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, regarding this dollar amount, I feel that it should be an effort among the Henry County and its cities. And so should we choose to move forward with this project, I think that a conversation needs to take place between Chair Wood, Sherri, and the cities about cost sharing. But I'm here to give you a heads up that I'm requesting one hundred and fifty thousand from you in my fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one budget request. The last item is TDM, which stands for Transportation Demand Management. It's a transportation planning lingo, which basically refers to alternate commute option strategies like carpool, vanpool, transit, alternate flexible work schedule, and working from home. Now, we all know that Henry County has a traffic congestion problem. In fact, it's an understatement. And one way to tackle traffic congestion is to build new roads, widen two-lane roads to four lanes, four-lane roads to six lanes. Now, this approach takes time and costs money, a lot of money. Money we don't necessarily have. And another approach to tackling traffic congestion is to put less demand, less pressure on the roads that we already have. And so we have, for example, a work schedule where we come to work at eight AM and leave at five PM. Now, what if some of the employees came at seven-thirty or at eight-thirty and left at four-thirty or five-thirty? What you could do is if you stagger the arrivals and departures, we would put less pressure on the roads right before eight AM and right after five PM. Now, I'm very mindful that some of my Henry County colleagues provide customer service to Henry County citizens face-to-face, and they must be here from eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. But then I'm thinking of some other staff members, like maybe an IT technician working in a back office, or maybe some HR personnel, or some cleaning people who don't necessarily provide face-to-face customer service. They can probably come at an alternate time and leave at an alternate time. And what that will do is put less pressure on the road network. Same concept with carpool. If there are two Henry County employees who live near each other, instead of driving alone, with making four trips each person coming to work and going back, if they share a ride, there are two trips instead of four. Now, to give you an example, at a previous place where I worked, we worked nine hours a day instead of eight. And every two weeks, we got one day off. So what that did is, over a two-week period, instead of making twenty car trips, we made eighteen trips and not make two trips. Multiply that, one thousand employees, that's two thousand car trips not made over each two-week period. So these are strategies or concepts to relieve the pressure that we put on our existing road network. So now, the Atlanta Regional Commission has a program called Georgia Commute Options. This program works with employers, employers like the Henry County Government, for example, to set up alternate commute options programs. And what's in it for the employees is that they can earn cash by doing anything other than driving a car alone and thus not adding to the traffic congestion. They can get gift cards, they can get cash, and so on. So I just want to make a suggestion that we make a baby step. And that is, if you would be open to just exploring some ideas and concepts to see if they can potentially make sense for Henry County, then I can have the Coordinator of the Georgia Commute Options come here to have a brief chat with you and with no obligations on your part. And with that, I will conclude my sales pitch to you.
Okay. Well, we already see we've got some questions. I've got some too, so we'll begin with Commissioner Holmes and then Commissioner Clemens, Commissioner Thomas, and then, of course, I'll delay mine after the commissioner's vote. Commissioner Holmes.
Sam, you went into detail regarding a number of different transit options, but you didn't touch on actual transit. Can you talk about that in more detail?
You're talking about the transit plan that we...
Yeah, you had it on the last slide. That's why I wanted to ask the question while you still had the slide up.
Are you asking about the transit plan?
No, that's not the slide. The very last one. You talked about vanpool, carpools, and then you had transit, but you weren't in detail about everything but actual transit. So can you talk about what do you mean by transit? And what's the plan on moving forward with significant transit options that can really help improve traffic in Henry County or the Southern Crescent?
So basically, I talked about some alternative ways for people to come from home to work and from work to go back home. So one option is carpool where if...
You spoke about those things, but I'm talking about the third bullet point, transit. Can you talk more about that?
Henry County right now has a fixed route service in northern Henry County. And I took a ride on this fixed route and got an assessment of how it is performing. We are looking into an alternate fixed route that can potentially serve more people. We are looking into starting a new fixed route service from McDonough City Square to the shopping center in Locust Grove. So and also, we right now have reservation-based demand response service. So to answer your question, we need to look at what transit service is feasible from this point forward. As Henry County is growing in population, is becoming more urbanized, As Henry County is growing in population, is becoming more urbanized, we are looking at a significant cut in federal transit operations funding after the 2020 census data comes out in year 2023. So that's where the transit plan comes in, is to see, in light of the money that's coming in, what transit service that we can provide based on our funds available. Maybe it can then also open up the discussion of how, whether we should generate more transit funds locally, potentially a transit sales tax or some other means in light of federal funding cut. So transit could be one way we can relieve traffic congestion on Henry County roads. One bus can eliminate potentially 20 cars on the road.
You also spoke about changing work hours here at the Board of Commissioners to try to relieve traffic. But with 70% of our population traveling into Atlanta to work, is there going to be a plan to talk to those employees in North Atlanta and downtown Atlanta to try to relieve traffic in Henry County?
As I mentioned, the program at Georgia Commute Options, it works with individual employers. So they work with employers. In my presentation, I talked about just Henry County Government, that we can potentially set up some alternate commute options here to start with and then encourage other employers to also embrace alternate commute options. For example, the Piedmont Hospital is a major employer. And if they implement some alternate commute options, that will significantly help with congestion. So my suggestion today was just to start here first and be an example, and then encourage other employers in the area to follow our lead.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Holmes? Okay, Commissioner Clemens, and then Commissioner Thomas.
Yes, Sam, this, my concern is really for you and also for the rest of the board. I'm concerned about, you know, Henry County has a lot of high-risk roads. We're becoming more skeptical to a greater risk of our walkers having injuries and having, being fatally attacked from cars that are on the road. And I see more and more people walking in Henry County now more than ever. And I guess because we don't have the transit options to get where they need to get. And although trails are great and everybody is always quick to applaud on trails, and I'm good with trails, it's a leisure thing, but what about the lighting that we need on the streets? What about the sidewalks, you know, that we need, the lack of safe crossing? If someone needs to walk to the grocery store, they don't even have sidewalks to walk on safely. So, you know, as we talk about trails, I would like to see us, when we talk about transportation, to include our pedestrian safety plan. Residents are walking now, and they don't want to have to walk on the trail. The trail goes nowhere. If they walk across the street to the grocery store, that's a necessity. And so I want us to make sure that we're also focusing on building bridges, sidewalks, and street lighting. And I think that's a huge part that so many people miss. As Henry County becomes less rural, more suburban, we've got to take into consideration. I know that if you look at 138, you look at what Jodico potentially can become, you look at Jonesboro Road, you look down at South Point area, those people are walking to those stores, they're walking to the restaurants, they're walking to the grocery stores, and they have no sidewalks. There's no way to cross over, and I know I just had this conversation with our county manager's office, they have no way to walk from one side of four lanes, six lanes, to get to the other side. So we've got to start thinking about not just trails that go to leisure, woody areas, but we've got to think about bridges that go from one side of 75 or one side of our major roads to the other side of our major roads. How do they get from over at the Target and the Home Depot over into McDonald? Or how do those people walk from the new apartments down in McDonald Parkway over to the other side to get to the grocery stores? So I really want us to focus on some sidewalks, some street lighting, some bridges. I know that for our SPOSS dollars on the district two sides, we're looking at a lot of connectivity, sidewalks, and getting people to get out of their cars. People have to drive across the street to go to the grocery store because we don't have crosswalks, because we don't have bridges, because we don't have sidewalks. So please add into your plan sidewalk bridges, lighting, and sidewalks.
You made a very good point. It's not just in Henry County, but it's all over Atlanta. We just focus on the car drivers and overlook the needs of the pedestrians, the bicyclists, the transit riders, and we should consider their needs as well. But it's not just a planning issue, it's also a funding issue. So you brought up a very good point, and then we also need to fund those.
And my point is that we need to fund not only leisure walking, but we need to fund walking out of necessity for people getting the things that they need. One death is too many. And I know we've had people that were walking across four-lanes roads and got killed and run down by cars. So just make sure we focus on that as well.
You made a good point.
The state has a program out, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but GDOT has a pedestrian safety action plan program. It's called Peds. Please look into that and make sure that Henry County is at the table.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioner? Okay, Commissioner Thomas, and then myself, unless there's other, oh, Commissioner Wilson, then myself. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you. I want to say, first of all, Mr. Baker, thank you so very much. I am excited, elated to finally have transportation off the back burner, off the shelves, to be an active conversation among these commissioners. That has not happened. Thank you for pulling a 2016 Comprehensive Plan off the shelf and now preparing to update it so it can address the issues here in Henry County. And I'm quite sure the citizens here have to be elated that finally we have someone that's going to be a visionary and look at what we need to do to build connectivity in Henry County, be it for leisure, be it for need, be it for necessity. But now we have the conversation. And I know personally, I've not had the conversation and have been looking for where is this information? So thank you so much for being there. Thank you for the options you put before us. One of the things I wanted to say as we go forth and as we go forth in this budget cycle that we're about to have conversation about, be sure to look at all these elements that you talked about, the sidewalks, the lighting, possible pedestrian bridges from one side to the other. All these different things have not been considered in our budget. So we are going to look to you to put before us some type of proposal to say, here's what I need to help the citizens in Henry County to have that connectivity that's needed, okay? So please, it's almost like saying, okay, it's almost Christmas time, you won't get everything, but give us what we need to consider to make sure we are addressing the needs of transportation here. One thing is very, very important that I'm looking at is a parking ride in District Four. And our deputy county manager and I have physically been out riding, looking at what that possibility can take place, looking at how we can secure the land for it and what it would take to make that happen. So I know he'll be having that conversation with you as well. But this is very, very important to us, and I hope you will know, your presence here brings a new era to us, your conversations will be more than welcome, and we look forward to your updates. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Thomas? No, I think, okay. Commissioner Wilson, then myself.
I think Commissioner Thomas hit on what I was going to want to ask about with additional parking rides. I don't think we have anything on the southern part of the county. So if we could look into maybe adding some, some type of parking ride south of McDonough.
Speaking of parking ride lot, we have a meeting coming up with Greta, and Sheri and I will have a talk about the parking ride lot that is under construction of Jonesboro Road. So that would be a good time to also bring up that maybe additional parking ride lots in Henry County.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Barn?
Yes, I am up. I was just fixing to mention about the parking ride on Jonesboro. I'm glad you mentioned that. You know, when we look at these sidewalks, I think too, we need to involve the cities to some degree on the sidewalks, because a lot of things you were talking about lies in the city limits of McDonald or Hampton or wherever. And we need to sit down and have a conversation with them. And, you know, we have audits that say we'll put sidewalks here and there. And I have been mentioning for several years now to maybe possibility of us having a sidewalk bank, maybe where we develop a piece of property and we got a sidewalk that's required and it doesn't go to anything, then maybe we could take those funds and put it in a bank and then they'll take those funds and help put sidewalks where they're needed. So I'd like for you to look at that as well.
Okay, let me make a comment and then I'll come back to you. First of all, we're just really excited because this, all of this conversation about road improvements, about trails, sidewalks, lighting, this are major concerns by our citizens. And so we are really excited that we're packaging it. And I do want to say, I do commend staff because this has not just been something that's just been sitting there. We've been working towards it, but we've got to be more aggressive and strategic. So we're glad to have you here. I too totally agree that I'm ready to schedule a joint meeting with the cities so that we can talk about the Comprehensive Transportation Plan that, you know, really covers every aspect of Henry County. Our citizens don't really care whether it's in county territory or city jurisdiction. They really just want some relief here, so I'm really glad to see that. You made a mention about the Transportation Improvement Program plans, the TIP, and we also have the Regional Transportation Plan. In your next update, can you actually bring us the current status of what roads are in the TIP, what is in the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, and then those things that are projects that we need to continue to talk about that are not necessarily yet included in that?
Okay.
So I would encourage us to go back and bring that update. The other thing is, is let's continue to focus on those areas where there is high traffic volume and high safety incident issues, where there is crashes, fatalities, things like that. Because as we talk about this, I remember the last time we had the Comprehensive Transportation Plan in updates, we had, I forgot how many, billions of dollars that was going to be required to fund this. But we've got to think about priorities and definitely leverage as much state and federal funding as we can. So again, if you can bring that, you know, as part of it, I'm willing to, Sheri, I'll look over to you to kind of help along with Sam to schedule these joint meetings, so includes the board and the cities as far as what our priorities need to be so that we can again aggressively address this. The other thing is, is I know I did send you a note about lighting concerns along the road, so I was glad to hear Commissioner Clemens speak about some of the concerns that our citizens have regarding lighting, especially in some of the non-highly populated areas. So if there's high incidences of crashes and accidents, or even hopefully not many fatalities, let's identify those as priorities as well. So again, this is really good news. Thank you, Commissioner Thomas, again for, again, bringing it so that it can be packaged. And I want to thank this board for, again, as Sam introduced, he started this conversation about Henry County, the only county that now has a transportation department. And that, again, goes to show that the board is responding and listening to what our citizens are speaking about. My last thing, and this, and I hear about this oftentimes, at some point in time, I would love for us to continue in our planning and zoning updates to talk about as development is current, what are our transportation plans that are related to that development? Meaning, in other words, we're trying to play catch-up right now and at the same time, get ahead. And as development occur, we need to overlay our land use with our transportation planning so that, again, we are, you know, again, addressing the infrastructure needs that are occurring along with the development that's happening in our areas as well. So that would be a thing that I ask as part of the planning and zoning to talk more about the transportation, even though it's separate, but yet is related.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Clemens.
I just want to follow back up with something Commissioner Wilson said about the Greta stops or the parking ride stops. We do have three. We have two that are active in Henry County and one that's coming up. We have right by South Point, on the backside of Avalon Park, is the busiest Greta stop in the state of Georgia. That's in Henry County in District Two. If you guys go over where Avalon Park is, that's the busiest Greta stop in the state because you've got people from Butts County, Spalding County, Henry County, all come to that parking ride, and then they're commuting to Atlanta. You've got the one at 138 that's on the Clayton County side. And then you've got Jonesboro Road coming up. We can immediately start, like Commissioner Holmes is saying, we've got transit routes now, we've got fixed routes. Those routes can start now from our large centers. If they're picking up from South Point or they're picking up from that area, taking people to the other ones, we could start some transit stuff now. But our citizens don't even know about those parking rides. And we've done a really, we've not done a great job in educating our citizens that we've got transit that takes them from Henry County to Atlanta. So we need to make sure that we, there is one on the south side, it's one of the busiest. I don't think that we need to add more, we just need to utilize and educate our citizens of the ones that we have. We have a new one coming up at McDonald, at Jonesboro Road, and that's going to take a lot of relief too, but citizens still do not know about those parks and rides. And there's no transit to get them to those places.
Commissioner Clemens, you bring up a good point because we actually, we have a location down at the Speedway as well.
That's correct.
And then we have to add an additional location off of the 138, so we have a pickup at the Brands Mark.
That's right.
In addition to that. One of the things that we're going to be discussing with our Greta partners when we talk about parking ride lots is what other options can we provide outside of those that are just going to the parking ride lot and trying to get to Atlanta? One of the things that we've talked about most recently with Sam and with Ty Salters, our Transit Director, is what we can do to offer trips maybe to the airport for those that are here in the county that don't want to drive up to the airport. So we are looking at other options to make sure that we let citizens know that we have options available. As Sam mentioned, right now, we are somewhat, our transit system operates more of as an Uber or Lyft. You call, demand response, we pick you up, we drop you off. And with the county growing at the rate that it's growing and with the amount of development that we are experiencing, we've got to start looking at some transit options. I will tell you, one of the things, and because we were talking about the Jonesboro Road parking ride, that's one of the reasons that we're meeting with the Greta staff. Because right now, if you've driven down Jonesboro Road, there's a lot of development going on. But what we've been told is that right now, they don't have a route defined for that parking ride lot. And what we want to make sure is that we don't build that parking ride lot and it sits there empty. So what we're working on is what can we do from a transit perspective to say, look, we'll partner with Greta to provide some maybe weekend trips to the airport or maybe some smaller trips from Henry County to maybe medical facilities that may be at Southern Regional and Clayton County. So I appreciate hearing the comments from the commissioners that we want more and more parking ride lots, and we're going to commit to making sure that we put some plans in place and not wait for the state to dictate how those plans will occur. So it is happening, and we will continue to keep the board updated on that.
The only thing, Sheri, is that we do a lot of, as government, government absolutely moves too slow for Commissioner Clemens.
I understand.
Absolutely too slow. Because we don't have to figure this out. Cobb County, Douglas County, other counties have been doing this with their own fixed routes forever. All we have to do is to look at what works. We don't have to reinvent the plan. In 24 hours, we can fix our antiquated transit system in Henry County by just adopting what has worked based on facts of what's happened in other counties. So I get tired of us just talking, talking. We're going to talk about it, we're going to think about it, we're going to plan about it. No, pick up the phone, call, find out what's been working for 15 years in Cobb County, and let's adopt it. And we can do it on a training page, even if we try it for 90 days, 60 days, six months. We don't have to reinvent this wheel and then come back and act like somebody invented something that's been going on. So it's already out there. So I know you're working on it. I'm just saying, let's not keep talking about it because our transit is overburdened and overworked when I see them driving around at Mrs. Winters on 138, dropping off people. And I know they just have to go. That's not what we should be doing. We need to look and adopt what's out there already working. So I would really like to see us implement something within the next six months based on what's already out there and what's proven, has a proven track record of working.
So we have a 12 o'clock budget meeting, and I'm going to need the same energy when we start talking about funding. Because right now, the delay in us moving projects is that we are dependent on federal dollars, and so we are bound by their federal rules. If the board says, hey, we don't want to be taught to the federal red tape, we want to push our own, we're ready. We have some fixed routes that we can present to this board today in terms of things that we can do in immediate, but it takes money. And that's what we've got to have a commitment from the board to say we're going to invest.
Cobb County citizens pay for transportation.
I'm sorry.
Cobb County citizens pay for transportation. So I'm saying that we can do it, and we don't have to wait, and we don't have to burden our citizens with more money when we can charge people to get on the bus and use it. If I'm not getting on the bus, then I don't want to have to pay for the bus. But if those people that are riding the bus should pay, just like they do in Cobb County. So we need to look at what's working and stop saying that we can't do it because we don't have funding or we're waiting on the state. Our citizens are sick of us saying, well, we can't move because of the state. Henry County needs to take care of itself and stop being, stop begging. We can do it, and we need to go ahead and do it. So I'm supporting 100%, of course, I'm one vote, but we've got five other people up here that's going to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas, and I've got something else to do. Commissioner Thomas?
I just want to say that I hear the passion that Commissioner Clemens is expressing, but I think we have rose to the occasion. We have Mr. Baker here, and he is updating our plans, he's looking at our transit, he's looking at the options. And we have a point person basically to say, put the proposal together, put the numbers to it, present it to us, then she's right. The commission... The commissioners have to react to it. And just to have that person in place to start developing these concepts, putting the meetings together with the cities and the counties to talk about shared responsibilities is a huge move toward making sure Henry County address transit here. And there are some things we can do within months, but we need someone to put that together, make it happen. And I am elated again to see that person that will be pointing to the work with our county administration to make it happen. So, I think we'll make it happen in a few months. Thank for doing good with it.
I do agree. So, this has been a really good lively, good discussion, needed to happen, and I agree this is good to have. One other thing I'd like to also consider, actually, that you keep an eye on, because we definitely understand we've got challenges now, but we've got to start thinking about even more so in the future. We've got to engage in those conversations regarding commuter rail. That's 2050 before it even gets to Clayton County. So, I do not want Henry County, and I do know that the I-75 Coalition from Macon, there's a line of officials and agencies that are working to work on commuter rail from Macon, you know, to at least Lovejoy. Henry County needs to be at the table with those discussions as well for commuter rail. So, again, we can share that information with you a little bit later. Okay?
Well, speaking of that, Georgia DOT is developing, updating their rail plan, and part of that is commuter rail. So, I attended their last meeting, and I intend to stay involved in that.
Thank you very much. So, all right, any other questions or comments? Thank you for the opportunity this morning. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, welcome again, Mr. Sam Baker. We are glad to have you here. All right, well, very good. Now, we will move into the next discussion from the county manager, so we appreciate your comments.
Good morning, again, board in, chair in board, I do apologize. Just a couple of county manager comments this morning. I wanted the board to be aware that we're, Henry Census 2020 is full speed ahead. Our county team has been working diligently to ensure that the message gets out. I wanted the board and for those that are here in the audience and that are listening to just mark down a couple of key dates, and this information will, again, be posted on our county website. But on this Thursday, February 6th, our Census Committee will have a meeting at 10:00 a.m. If there are individuals that are still interested in participating on the committee, please show up for the meeting. It's going to be held here at the County Administration Building. And then on next Tuesday, February 11th, we're going to have Census on the Square. We're going to be handing out documents, paperwork for those patriots that may be in the McDonough Square area and just making people aware of it. And then our big kickoff day is on Thursday, February 20th. We will host across the street at the Red Hawk Park, which is directly across the street from the Administration Building, our official Census kickoff. That will be held from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And then on Sunday, March 22nd, we will have our Census Day at our churches. And so, we want to make sure that we get that information out. And then finally, we are going to have Outreach Wednesdays, and that's where we're going to put our committee members that are participating in our census to work and just get out in the community and make sure that we are reaching out to those that may not be represented or to those that may not be aware of what the census involves. And so, I just, again, want to thank Dawn and Kayla from the county team who's spearheading this event, and then Melissa Robinson and her team who's doing all of the marketing. We have some public service announcements that will be going out in the next couple of days. And then each commissioner should have received a flyer that you can share on your own personal social media page, or if you are presenting at a town hall meeting and you want to have that information, we can have that available for you as well. And then finally, in terms of the census, we are, we have a couple of trinkets that if you are at a meeting and you want to provide those trinkets to individuals, you can provide those as well. We are also, on our Public Safety Team, you may or may not be aware, we are currently undergoing our ISO rating, which is a big, big deal for Henry County. Our site visit has already been conducted, and we're hoping to have the results in the next three months. And so, if you have specific questions regarding the rating or the ISO rating, please get with Mr. Johnson, and he can certainly talk you through that process, but wanted the board to be aware of that. During the last, or two meetings ago, there were a couple of comments made during the commissioners' comments, and I wanted to follow up with the board just to give you a status update. Commissioner Clemens talked a lot about lighting and specifically Jonesboro Road. We are waiting for Georgia Department of Transportation to finalize the agreement for the lighting along Jonesboro Road, and we are hopeful that we're going to get that in the coming days so that we can bring it to the board for final approval. And so, that will be a big project where we're going to light that corridor. But again, we are waiting on the state for that agreement, and as soon as we receive it, we will get that to the board for approval. Also, during the meeting, there was comments made, or Commissioner Clemens, I think, mentioned scheduling a meeting with Mayor Copeland regarding the courthouse. We're still working to get that done. I do want the board to be aware that staff is still also working on providing to the board a comprehensive facilities plan. I think I've heard from a number of the board members that we need to look at options, but one of the things specifically is looking at an option to keep the courthouse where it is. And so, we're certainly working on providing that to the board and certainly want to make sure that we have all of our partners outside of the board of commissioners at the table as we navigate through that process. So, that is ongoing as well. Also, Commissioner Thomas, I think, had questions two meetings ago regarding the status of Connecting Henry, wanted the board to be aware that our county management team did meet with representatives from Connecting Henry, and we will be bringing back to the board a resolution for consideration. There have been some changes made to the structure of Connecting Henry that the board needs to be made aware of, and staff has assessed those changes and will be making a recommendation in terms of next steps as it pertains to Connecting Henry. So, be happy to answer any questions that the board may have pertaining to that. And then finally, believe it or not, we are kicking off our SPOLOX 5. We will collect our first penny on April 1st, and staff is working diligently to go ahead and define project timelines and schedules. I will advise the board that we're going to have several RFPs that are going to be hitting the streets for some capital projects. So, if you are contacted by vendors, please refer them to our purchasing department so that we don't jeopardize that process in terms of making sure that vendors understand what our processes are. Staff will also look to bring to the board in March a project schedule for the actual projects, and more details will be forthcoming. At this time, if you have any questions for me, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Okay, let's see, Commissioner Thomas.
Me?
Yes.
I wanted to know if you would also give us an update on old dollars from old SPOLOXes, what has, is still out there, what has not been used as of yet, what projects may need to be placed in a, I think it's a category that no longer is needed or something to that effect? Because we're moving forward, but I'd like to know, have we cleaned up the old SPOLOXes? What is out there that was recommended in 2010 that's no longer feasible in 2020 that maybe we need to start moving these dollars to other areas to meet the needs of the county? Could you get us some type of report in the future on that as well?
Absolutely. We'll bring a presentation at the next board meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you. We're now moving to our next agenda item, which is a District Two appointment to Henry First. There is a vacancy for District Two appointee, and today, we're bringing before the board Ms. Klatania Stidham to serve on the Board of Directors of Henry First, and her term would commence immediately and would end December the 31st of 2020. Are there any questions or comments regarding that appointment? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that appointment is unanimously approved. We're now moving to our consent agenda, and we've got several items that all relate to new district lights. And so, again, we'll read through those, and then if any board member would like to remove it from the consent agenda for further discussion, please advise. All the agenda items, consent agenda items will come from building and plan review. And again, they're all relating to the creation of a new street light district. The first one is in District Five for Clarkett Estates. The second one is in District Four regarding the Ellis Grove Phase Two subdivision on Kellytown Road. The next creation of a new street light district is for Ferris Park Phase One B subdivision on Ferris Road, and that's in District Two. And then we've got the final creation of a new street light district for Traditions at Crystal Lake Phase One subdivision on Jonesboro Road in District Two. Those are the items on our consent agenda. Does anyone care to have any of those removed for further discussion? Seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we have a majority vote. I'm two-stepped out for a moment. Okay, so the consent agenda, which is a quorum, does move forward. All right, we'll now invite up Mr. David Smith to come and speak to us regarding the SPOLOX bond resolution that was actually held on November the 2019, so we're looking forward to hearing an update about that.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Henry County Community. What you have before you is a resolution with respect to the declaration of the results of an election that we held on November the 5th, 2019, and for other related purposes. That other related purposes deals with the issuance of general obligation debt. Basically, what we're asking you to do is to authorize us to move forward with this resolution. We held the referendum, which was to reimpose or continue the SPOLOX, and so, from SPOLOX Four, we want to go to SPOLOX Five, and the issuance of general obligation debt. It becomes effective upon the expiration of our current sales and use tax. What questions do you have?
Okay, we've received this information in advance as well, so are there any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
To move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussions? All in favor? Okay, it'll, again, passes by the majority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, and again, our next item is we're inviting our Deputy County Manager Brett Johnson to talk about the approval of the purchase of two-way radios and vehicles for emergency vehicles.
Yes, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and good morning. I'm here again this morning to finalize our phase of our public safety vehicles that were approved on September 17th, 2019 by the Board of Commissioners and the purchase of 77 public safety vehicles. This is definitely a kind of a time game we try to do, especially with our technology services, to make sure the equipment we're buying is in line with the delivery of the vehicle, so we are getting the latest updated materials. And with that, the computers, the laptops, computers, the mobile computers for the cars have actually had two changes since we've ordered them. So, it's to the point now, we're timing it out for the final phase of the equipment of vehicles, and today, we're here for the public safety laptop, mobile data computers for the vehicles, and the installation of the radios, the two-way radios that go with that. It's our recommendation on this phase to be funded through the capital projects that's been approved on September 17th, to approve the $153,447 to Loud and Communications for the purchase of new and installing radios, existing radios in the vehicles, and to purchase 77 mobile laptop computers for them to Prologix ITS for the amount of $198,854.81. I have any questions?
Are there any questions from the board regarding this resolution? Okay, seeing none, seeing none, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, it is approved. Okay, we have our next agenda item coming up, and I think the District Commissioner will take a moment, if it's the pleasure of the board. I definitely wanted the District Commissioner, we introduced it, to be here, so we'll pause for a second. But you're welcome to come forward for those, Mr. Penn, as we began to introduce this. And we welcome you as a new member to our team as well, so looking forward to working with you.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair.
Thank you.
Are we ready?
Okay.
Okay, before you have an ordinance amendment, section 3-13-4.
Well, I guess we can go through the introduction as well. I was waiting on the District Commissioner that introduced it, so.
Chair, would you suggest that we just skip this item and then maybe move on to the public safety item under fire and then come back to this one?
We'll see what the county clerk comes back with, and if there's a delay, then we'll move forward. Thank you. All right, we appreciate your patience and appreciate everyone else's patience, but we are now going to introduce Mr. Jonathan Penn of our Leisure and Public Services Director to present the next ordinance by allowing alcohol sale and consumptions to include beer, wine, and spirits in county-owned locations. You may proceed now. Thank you.
Good morning again. This is an ordinance amendment, section 3-13-4A6A, to allow alcohol consumption to include beer, wine, and spirits. And this is adding spirits. We're currently allowing beer and wine at certain locations, and this is to allow it at those same locations. This isn't going to, I know there's some concern about all parks and things like that, but this will not allow it at all parks, it's just at those locations. And what this will do is help us bring in more events, it'll bring additional revenue, and what we're looking to do is to have a fee attached to that so that when those events do come in, when people want to, weddings or large sporting events or big events, Saigon de Mayo, any other types of events like that, that they can, there will be a fee, but they will still be bound by the state laws and have their permits and things like that, as well as the security and things. So, this is just to allow those spirits where we're already doing beer and wine.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? I've got a point to make, any questions or comments? Can you just read out the parks that this is referencing?
Yes, ma'am. That includes Nash Farm Park, Hatters Park Arena and building area only, Locust Grove Event Center, and Village Park.
Okay. And then my only other question, which is kind of related, but indirectly related, should we soon expect a overall county-wide parks and recreation plan and update that we've already spoken about previously so that it looks at not only this, but other aspects of what's, you know, our parks are to do now and in the future?
Yes, ma'am. I am currently working on putting together a comprehensive master plan that will address a lot of the issues that are going on in the park system.
Okay, those are my questions. Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
Not directly in reference to this, but the master plan that you just mentioned?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you please make sure you include in there an update on the relationships that we have with associations and the current contracts that we're operating under with the other ball associations in our area too?
Yes, ma'am, that's top of my list, the associations.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions, Commissioner Wilson?
Questions for the county attorney. Where does a ordinance like this put the county liability wise?
Well, you know, the incremental liability is none. We already allow beer and wine. The addition of spirits doesn't really create any additional liability. For the most part, we don't, we are shielded from liability just by nature of our immunity. You know, if someone, if someone is over-served, that will be on the caterer or the provider of the alcohol will be responsible for that. If somebody leaves a park intoxicated and causes a problem, that'll be on that individual, it won't be on the county. It's not a significant liability for the county in any form at all.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Clemens?
And I would just like to say, I asked for this to be added to the, it's already there, and I added for spirits to be added because I thought that we could get extra. So, right now, we're allowing beer and wine, and there is no extra fee. If we add spirits, and the thing that you didn't say is that we could increase and add them to have an extra fee on to their permits because they're already doing it, and we're not collecting any money behind it because it's not a part of our ordinance. So, this was an ordinance amendment. amendment, not really a new ordinance that we were adding. So I just wanted to make sure that the Commissioners knew that this was a ordinance amendment, and I didn't see where you added what the fee would be. Have we looked at what the additional fee would be?
Yes, I didn't want to put that in the ordinance because we don't want to have to keep bringing this back every time we want to change the fee. So what we'll do is introduce that in our fee structure when we submit the budgets with, along with our other fees. So that way, if we'd want to change that fee in between time or whatever, for whatever reason, we can do that, increase that fee so that we don't have to continuously come back to the board for changing that fee.
So, you're done, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Okay, so apparently, we do not charge any fees for the current beer and wine that is served.
Correct.
Is it possible to do it for beer and wine only and not include spirits to add a fee?
We can impose a fee however we want to, yes.
Okay. All right, okay. All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
There is a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? My point is, I understand we serve beer and wine currently. If anything, I'd like it to just remain that way, but add fees to it. So, but again, we have a floor, a motion for as it is stated, so it's passed first and second, but I just wanted to interject my thoughts about it. Okay, we've heard a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll now move on to the next agenda item, and this is regarding, we'll invite Deputy Chief Jonathan Burnett regarding the approval for the emergency repair of a vehicle that we have, Fire Department. Okay?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members. This morning, I'm here to present a resolution to the Board of Commissioners approving the emergency repair of Rescue Six. Rescue Six is one of the Henry County Fire Department ambulances, which is a two thousand eighteen Dodge forty-five hundred Bron ambulance. The Henry County Fire Department identified the damage is same to Rescue Six as needed. Emergency repairs due to a not at fault accident. Henry County Fire Department obtained a quote from Ten Eight Fire Equipment for the repairs of Rescue Six for the amount of sixty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and six cents. Ten Eight is the authorized dealer for Bron sales, parts, and services for Florida and Georgia. Funds are available in the amount of sixty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and six cents in the Henry County Fire Department's tires, batteries, and parts account. Any questions?
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
What is the issue to Rescue Six?
It's a two thousand eighteen ambulance. It was one of our fairly new ambulances.
And that is the best option at this point, is to repair it?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussions? All in favor? Okay, thank you. That resolution passes unanimously. Okay, we'll now move into the next item, and it is under Animal Care and Control, and it's an ordinance amendment regarding proposed revisions to humane standards and public safety with now a new section regarding hobby beekeeping, and we invite up Ms. Jerry Yoder for that presentation. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I am here before you this morning with a resolution to do some revisions to our current animal control ordinance, and I also appreciate our county clerk's assistance because I am typically terribly challenged with PowerPoint presentations. You should have basically a cheat sheet that the county clerk handed out this morning that walks you through the changes that we are requesting to the ordinance. The first one was a update to the definition of animal under restraint. This definition was broadened to make it clear to our citizens just what it means to have an animal under restraint, and it also disallows the use of retractable leashes as a valid method of restraints for dogs that are off the owner's property. Second, under section three, four, forty-two, reclamation of pets from our shelter. If an owner comes to the shelter to reclaim their pet, our goal is to get as many animals home as possible. So if an animal comes in and it's not microchipped, so it doesn't have current owner identification, microchipping will be mandatory if any animal that's not microchipped is reclaimed from the shelter. We updated section three, four, fifty-five, which are the requirements for possessing a dog that has been classified as vicious or dangerous. Those are classifications that give, are given to dogs that bite unprovoked. There is a section in the ordinance that requires a certificate be issued annually to the owners who have dogs that are classified as vicious or dangerous on their property. We've raised the, the payment for those certificates from, for a dangerous dog from a hundred dollars to five hundred dollars a year, and the annual certificate fee for a dog classified as vicious, which is the most egregious of the two classifications, from a hundred dollars to a thousand dollars a year. And section three, four, ten, penalties for violations, that was amended at the request of our Solicitor's Office and our magistrate court. The wording for this change was provided by our county attorney, and it was, it was changed to allow our magistrate court to have some more leeway with creative sentencing. And finally, not to throw in a pun, but the section that's probably given the most buzz here is the addition of section three, four, sixteen, which is a backyard beekeeping ordinance. It's a little like the backyard chicken ordinance, which would allow hobbyists that live in residential zoning to keep a limited number of honeybee hives for personal honey production or beeswax production on their property. Any questions?
Are there any questions? And I'll wait to see. I've got a comment or two. Any questions from the board? Okay, Commissioner Barn?
Yeah, Jerry, going back to the animal under restraint.
Yes, sir.
Section C, six foot length, how does this compare to our surrounding counties with this part of them?
Honestly, it's about fifty-fifty. One of the things that we see, and Commissioner Clemens mentioned it earlier, as our population increases, we are seeing an increased number of pedestrians. Not only pedestrians that are walking to and from stores, but pedestrians that are walking for recreation. The problem that we're seeing in our department with these flexible or retractable leashes, some of these leases extend up to thirty feet. So if you're walking on one side of the street, and my dog is out on a leash that reaches from where I'm standing to you, while my dog might be tethered, it's certainly not restrained. We've had issues with people being tangled up in the leashes, dog-on-dog attacks, where we're, we've seen a lot in our county parks where I'm walking two dogs, and they're stretched out thirty feet away from me. You're walking two dogs, they're thirty feet away from you. The dogs aren't under control. A standard leash is six feet in length. So our proposal was if a dog is off the owner's property, for protection for our pedestrians in our parks, in our communities, is that dog needs to be not only leashed, but it needs to be in a situation where it can be easily controlled.
And I could agree with that in our parks, but I know I walk my two little shih-tzus every evening, and they've got about a twelve-foot leash, and they like to get out and roam a little bit, and, but I'm having a little problem with that. The other thing I want to ask you about, about leaving an animal unattended in a car, what is the fine for that? Did you mention that?
Are the fine structure, that's actually, it's, part of it is set by our ordinance. The maximum fine is a thousand dollars, but we don't have control over the fines. We, it can issue the citation, and then once it goes to our court system, then the judge will assess the fine. But under our ordinance and under magistrate court, and the county attorney can certainly correct me, the maximum fine would be a thousand dollars and/or jail time.
Okay. And the only other question, and I know we're going to probably get a little more depth, in-depth on the bee thing, but on the chicken ordinance that we have, the minimum lot size, hitting at a half acre?
Yes, sir, it is a half an acre.
Okay, and this is a quarter of an acre?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I've got several questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, first of all, this document was thirty-seven pages, and I was not really aware of all of the different sections.
That's why I provided the kind of the cheat sheet, so it would be a little easier for you to find the, find the sections.
So I didn't get a chance to study all of the other sections that you made a mention of, so I, you know, accept responsibility. But again, I wasn't aware of the other sections, but I thought it was mostly on the bee hive, and I think we've clarified that we have an ordinance regarding chickens, but this is regarding bee hives and so forth.
Yes, ma'am.
And it basically said in, in residential areas.
Yes, ma'am.
And so what my questions are, because first of all, I understand the significance of bee hives, the cross-pollinization, you know, again, if they're, you know, have a water source, they, you know, they don't really cause any other problems. But my question is, is that this says that this is for residential, and I'm, you know, again, thinking about, you know, this more seems like an agricultural type of concept to me versus a agricultural and suburban. And we do have areas in our county, according to the land use, that is designated agricultural. So I've got a little concern about it being available in residential communities, whether it's an acre lot or a quarter acre lot. So can you help me understand more about why this is being opened throughout the county's residential?
I will be very honest with you that I knew enough about bees prior to being asked to look at this ordinance to be dangerous. The ordinance, we were approached by the Henry County Beekeepers Association to propose the ordinance, and we looked at it from two different standpoints. One, increasingly, especially with our millennial residents, there is a huge concern about the foods we eat, the safety of foods we eat, and more and more, we're seeing people that really want to ascribe to that farm-to-table lifestyle. They want to take control, to the extent that they can, of the products that they're consuming. We saw that in two thousand nine with the backyard chicken ordinance. Chickens were, as, as we're talking about bees, chickens were restricted to, to agricultural zoning. So when the backyard chicken ordinance was passed, that allows people in our residential zonings to keep a limited number of hens in their backyard in a coop for egg production. So this is a similar with that farm-to-table lifestyle. Secondarily, in two thousand and six, there was a phenomenon that is now called colony collapse disorder. It's, for no apparent reason, just a die-off of millions of honeybees. It made national news, it made local news. We don't stop to think that thirty to forty percent of the foods that we eat, we eat because of honeybees. So with a die-off of honeybees, we would lose blueberries, strawberries, all of our pears, apples, peaches, forty percent of our fruit and vegetable crops. So when you take that farm-to-table lifestyle and you pair that with a growing demand for people being concerned about the sustainability and the ecology, we've had, the Georgia Department of Agriculture says almost a thirty percent increase in people that are interested in keeping honeybees for that reason. So again, this was brought to our attention by the Henry County Beekeepers Association, and I will tell you that Mr. Danny Harvey, the President of the Henry County Beekeepers Association, and Mr. David McLeod, who is the current President of Potato Creek Beekeepers Association, are both here. If you have any specific questions about bees or beekeeping, they're our experts in the field. They'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, all right, okay. Well, thank you, and I'm glad that they're here as well. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clemens.
I would definitely like to hear from them, because although I understand that people do collect bees as a hobby, you can't stop the bees from roaming into other people's neighborhoods, and your neighbors could have children or could have an allergic reaction to bees. Bees do wander off to look for water, and I don't know how you're going to keep those bees from going to the neighbor's house to get water. So if we're going to look at this, I want to hear from them about how can we limit the number of hives that a resident have in a residential area? I mean, there's a lot of stipulations that we need to look at, putting on someone in a residential area, being able to just have, you know, fifty bee hives in their backyard.
That's in the ordinance, and I will tell you, to be honest.
See, I don't, we can't, I didn't see that in there.
It's a maximum of two hives per quarter acre, and I will tell you that this ordinance, I was stunned at the number of counties and a number of cities that have what they call urban beekeeping ordinances. We didn't try to reinvent the wheel here. We reached out to other communities that have an ordinance, and our ordinance is pretty much a clone of everybody else's ordinance that has backyard bees. As Commissioner Borum said, our backyard chicken ordinance, you have to have at least a half an acre. But every backyard bee ordinance that we could find out there, the minimum lot requirement was a quarter acre, and it's two hives per quarter acre. But if Mr. Harvey or Mr. McLeod wants to speak?
What about, what about permits that they should have? Like, the person who has the bee hive should have some type of license or permit?
The Georgia Department of Agriculture only requires permitting of bee hives if it's a commercial enterprise. If you're selling bees, if you're selling honey, then you're required to be permitted. But again, this is just for the hobby beekeeper, that they're producing enough honey for themselves or to give to family members or friends. This would not be a business venture. This would just be a hobby, no different than the backyard chicken ordinance. Those owners have hens, they eat the eggs the hens produce. This would be the same vein, that they would be personally using the honey that they, that their hives made.
Okay, and so I am concerned about how do they make sure that they contain the bee hives and the bees on their property, and are they required to have a water source
That's in the ordinance. We did put a number of fail safes.
Okay, Mr. Yoder, if we can let them speak, that would be great. So thank you, since they're here. So we welcome you this evening, and glad to hear from you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair and the other board.
Yeah, can you, yeah, the microphone?
And my own.
Danny?
It sounds like it's on, but you're.
Again, good morning, Madam Chair and other board members. To address some of your concerns, let me first say that honeybees by nature are not aggressive. They are defensive, and if you don't mess with them, they're not going to mess with you, so to speak. As Ms. Yoder pointed out, it is contained in the ordinance some restrictions on the beekeeper, such as the water source. They must provide one that's available for their bees. There are provisions in there for devices to interrupt their flight path, to take them up to a certain height, and gets them above any adjoining properties. There are limits on the number of colonies that the beekeeper can have on their properties, and that's, a honeybee is going to go back to that box. They're not going to just roam and take up residence anywhere on the property when they have that device available for them to go to. Did that address your question, or?
Yeah, I don't think we can regulate it anyway.
McLeod, current President Potato Creek. I've served as President Henry County. Your question as to how do you contain bees to your property, you don't, because bees are, they forage three to five miles. My other hat I wear is Georgia Wildlife Services, okay? I do nuisance wildlife, and one of the services I provide is removal of stinging insects when they get into homes, structures, trees. The fact is, we currently have bees here in Henry County, whether they're in a backyard beekeeper's box or in a tree. I can drive you all over this county and show you bee trees, and the fact is, because they can travel five miles, there's no way of saying that bee that interacted with that person came from a wild colony or backyard beekeepers. So restriction on backyard beekeepers is not going to stop your concerns of folks interacting with bees. Your best defense against interaction with wild bees, or God forbid, aggressive bees, is going to be bees that are maintained and kept by knowledgeable, skilled beekeepers, okay? We're concerned about Africanized bees. They're not going to make it this far north. All the biology says they just can't survive our winters. They've been in central Georgia, or central Florida for over a decade, and they've yet to cross a line from about Ocala to Jacksonville, mainly because they don't have the wintering skills. The Africanized bee is a tropical bee. It does not overwinter well this far north. There's only been two incursions in the state of Georgia. You can check with the UGAB Lab and Dr. Delaplane. They'll clearly state that we do not have them in this, this state, nor do we expect them to be. But should they, or should any other strain of aggressive bee come in, the best defense is going to be maintained stocks of calm, gentle bees maintained by beekeepers. Because of the natural mating process, where queens go out and mate with multiple drones, we want to saturate the area with drones from gentle bee stock. Now, I'm not saying load the county with bees, but a couple hu- Now, I'm not saying load the county with bees, but a couple hives here, a couple hives over there, a couple hives over there, are going to go a long way to providing good genetics for our bee stocks. Does that help?
I love the bees, I go to farms and get them all the time, I just don't want them in a residential area.
Well, I can give you a lot of anecdotal. I loaded some videos on our Facebook page where I'm working hives completely unsuited the way I am here. I can give you anecdotal evidence of my hives, I've had as many as fifteen not thirty foot from my front door, and my grandchildren play there. A lot of the concerns with bees is, well, again, anecdotal. I hear folks all the time, I mention bees, "Oh, I'm allergic to bees." Well, if you look at the medical facts, pain and swelling is not allergy. True bee allergy, anaphylaxis, and I'm familiar with that because my grandmother had it and I had a neighbor with it. True anaphylaxis is low, ten percent of the population or less, and, you know, there will be interaction with stinging insects. Georgia's home to over twenty different native bee species, probably that many or more wasp species, and the fact is, as a beekeeper, we joke about it, but every time someone within a half mile of us gets stung by anything, yellowjacket, hornet, wasp, it's one of our bees. And the fact is, we can't control that.
And another thing is that we have less land for bees that are more aggressive than we do for chicken, that we all eat, so, you know...
That's actually based on, and I was discussing this with Jerry as this was being drafted and everything, that's actually based on Fulton County, or not, DeKalb County, I believe it is, several counties in the area. And in asking and looking around and calling and talking to folks, we have yet to find one problem. I'm not aware of any problem that has occurred in DeKalb County with their quarter acre size. I mean, surely if there was a problem, we would have heard about it.
Let me add something, if I may, to what David is talking about. In Henry County Beekeepers Association, in promoting beekeeping, we don't just encourage a member to go get the equipment, get the bees, and set it up in their backyard. Twice a year, we conduct beginning beekeeping courses, where we promote best management practices, which encompasses a wide array of techniques. Some of those are good neighbor relations, things that you can do as a beekeeper to promote harmony with your neighbors. In other words, be the neighbor you want to live next door to. The other thing with best management practices, it's a saying in beekeeping, they don't read the same book, bees don't read the same book that beekeepers do. They rely on instinct, and they react instinctively. By promoting and teaching the best management practices, the beekeeper learns how to manage this, how to keep his bees, so to speak, under control. You're never going to control them a hundred percent, nobody's trying to pretend that you can, but there are things that you can do to minimize the interaction with the general public and your honeybees.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Did I have, do you have your hand up, Commissioner Barnes, as well? Okay, Commissioner Holmes, okay.
A quarter of an acre is a very small area, and I guess my concern is, how would it impact people living in subdivisions?
There are a number of subdivisions, not just in the counties that do have these ordinances, such as Metro Atlanta, DeKalb County, that, as Jerry alluded to, a quarter acre is pretty much the standard, what they've got in their zoning ordinance. Now, it's also in the proposed ordinance to put restrictive devices, such as interrupt the flight path. It can be a fence, it can be a hedge row, as well as in the ordinance, it's a, the hives or the colonies will need to be fenced in to prevent intruders from coming up and getting in close contact, excuse me, in close contact with those colonies, such as a small child wandering into the neighbor's yard that has the bee hives. The fence is going to keep them from getting close.
Yeah, but in subdivisions, you have covenants, and so, you know, the larger fencing, or the higher fencing, may not be approved by the neighborhood.
There, again, when we are introducing a new beekeeper, and in our beginning beekeepers course, that's some of the things that we highlight. Check your local zoning ordinances. If you live in a subdivision that has a homeowner's association that may have a covenant, you've still got to comply with those. This is not going to be, expected to be all encompassing.
If anything, I think it would improve quality of life. Many of our homeowners have fruit trees in the backyard, small vegetable gardens, small vegetable plots. I know I've received comments from my own neighbors that they're greatly impressed with the increased productivity of their gardens and fruit trees, so I do believe it would increase quality of life.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with bees, but I am afraid of bees, so if...
Well, you're more than welcome, I would be glad to show you my bees.
No, I'm good. I don't know, if I walked out in my backyard and I saw two bee hives next door, that would be concerning to me.
There's always that concern, but that's one reason why we have these associations. You or any of the general public are more than welcome to attend our meetings, we have meetings once a month, and we'll talk on various beekeeping topics. We love talking bees, we love our bees, we'd be glad to have you.
In addition to that, we attend several venues throughout the year to where we go and promote beekeeping, and we have what we call an observation hive. The bees are contained behind glass, and you can actually view and observe their activities that they take place during the, inside the colony, that you might not otherwise get the opportunity to see. So we try to promote that in a healthy, educated manner for the general public.
Anything else, Commissioner Holmes?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, I, this ordinance, how does it address a person that does have aggressive bees? And I'm not talking about African bees, but I'm talking about, you can have a hive of bees that are aggressive. So how does this ordinance address that?
I did not see anything specific in this ordinance, or the proposed ordinance, to address aggressive bees, but I can assure you that the average beekeeper themselves do not want aggressive bees, since they're the ones that's going to be inspecting the colonies, maintaining them on a weekly or monthly basis, so it's their, their intent is to maintain a gentle colony. And what we try to promote in the best management practices is that if you've got an aggressive hive, then you requeen that colony. You dispatch the old queen, you get you another one that has the gentle genetics in it, and introduce that to the colony.
Commissioner Barnes, we can also, it's your, if, that's what the board wishes, we can certainly add verbiage to the ordinance that would require that any hive that becomes a, quote, nuisance under state law, would have to be removed from the property.
Okay, yeah, I would want that. My next question, you mentioned different, several different jurisdictions, like you said, DeKalb County, and what other jurisdictions did you reach out to? And do you have a number of how many people are putting bees on a quarter acre lot, or is it just the policies out there and nobody's really using it? I'm just trying to...
Every ordinance that we could find, and I've spoken with people in Chatham County, which includes the city of Savannah, who have, they have a vibrant, what they call an urban beekeeping policy. Fulton County, Cobb County, DeKalb County, Fayette County, the city of, and you provided some pictures, the city of Sandy Springs, one of the photographs is the mayor of the city of Sandy Springs, they actually have bee hives in their public parks. There are bee hives on the top of elementary school in bindings, which is in DeKalb County. I've reached out to every municipality where we could find a backyard honeybee ordinance, and there were no questions, no concerns, they hadn't had any problem with their bee ordinance. Savannah's ordinance has been in effect since 2015, DeKalb County's has been in effect since 2015, and I was very surprised to find in Fulton County, which is one of probably our most populated county in Georgia, they actually have an initiative called Bee Downtown, B E E Downtown, where they have bee hives in places that you would never imagine, Pont City Market, headquarters of Chick-fil-A, headquarters of AT&T, in their schools, in their public parks. I was very surprised to find that in Fulton County, the urban bee population was so high, and then also in DeKalb County, their ordinance allows for four hives on a quarter acre, where everybody else's ordinance only allows for two hives per quarter acre.
But far as a number, you don't know if anybody living on a quarter of acre actually has any bees?
No, sir.
I would say, though, with the general public knowledge and the decline of pollinators overall, and then the popularity of hobbyist beekeeping, this quarter acre size and two colonies, it's going to allow more people to get into the beekeeping hobby. Even a beginning beekeeper, it's quite a sizable investment for them, so they're not going to just spend several hundred dollars on something that they're not going to properly maintain it and ensure that their investment's going to be protected.
Yeah, I guess the issue I'm having, I mean, I don't know a whole lot about bees, I know my grandfather had bees, but he had a lot of property, and I realize the importance of bees, they produce about a third of our food supply, and it seemed like we've addressed the issue about the aggressive bees. And I supported the chicken ordinance that we did, and it was on a half acre, and I could see myself supporting this for a half acre. Quarter acre to me is some, I've got some reservations about that, because when you put a twenty-four hundred square foot home on the house, then you don't have about eight thousand square feet. Now, I've got some concerns about that, but I do support us creating some type of ordinance, I just don't know, and Madam Chair, I mean, this may be one of those items that we want on a table, and so we can gather more information, I'd like to actually go out and see these things firsthand, but I'm just throwing my comments out there.
Okay, we'll come to Commissioner Holmes, and I've got a comment, and then we'll, I'd see Commissioner Clemmons and Thomas as well, and Wilson, so why don't we start with Commissioner Holmes, and then we'll continue conversations. I'll come after Commissioner Holmes, and then we'll come to the others. Commissioner Holmes?
So can you guys address carpenter bees, and would they be attracted to these colonies?
No. Totally different lifestyle. Carpenter bees are solitary bees, and they're constructing their nest in wood.
Yeah.
So at best, anything wood could attract carpenter bees, but that could be anything.
Okay, and my question is, first of all, just appreciate, I guess, the education that you're doing and all that you're doing for beekeeping, because I totally understand how significant bees are, especially for cross-pollinization and the health of our food. My struggle is, again, that we're saying that we want to open this up, you know, throughout our residential communities, and I cannot support that at this time, but I am open to some other form of ordinance that allows us to, again, strategically convert to an urban bee strategy, and even some of the locations you spoke about where it kind of, you know, structured with schools or with businesses or something like that, but I would be open to, again, hearing something that a little bit more urban strategy-wise versus opening it up to our, of residuals across the county. So that's my concern when I heard it, and I still, you know, held that thought here as well. All right, so I think I saw Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Clemmons.
Well, I just wanted to say, being a country girl, it doesn't really bother me. I mean, I understand the bee structures, where they are and how they live, that's just part of how I grew up. However, I do think we do need to try to educate this population, and that's part of the problem. So many people have the fear of the bees, and of course, the movies haven't helped because they help build that fear of bees, and they don't understand the nature, what these wonderful creatures do for us. But I grew up with peace trees and pear trees and all those type of stuff. What I would like to see done is find a way that we can start educating Henry County about this, and we may have to table it today, and maybe we can look at some other things that we can do, even if it's increasing the acreage to a half acre. Maybe we can require additional signing that these bees are here, be aware of them, you know, friendly bees here, something to start educating, adding it to our school system, and add it to other places, even in our parks, because we need them. Point blank, it's already been proven, if we lose too many bees, our food sources are definitely in danger across the entire nation, okay? But I do think what you're coming up against is the fact that so many people lack the education of bees, and they've been educated by our film industry, and been educated by people who go, "Oh, they would kill you, you're allergic to them," all this type of stuff and drama. That doesn't bother me personally, but I do understand that we need to take some time to help the general public understand what's out here and how to embrace it and bring it, let it happen in Henry County.
And both Henry County and Potato Creek would welcome the opportunity to interact with the community. We try and reach out to the community and do a lot of these events. For instance, Spalding County, their Farm Days, Potato Creek has an observation hive, and they rotate, it's second or third graders, I can't recall which, every school in the county rotates through Farm Day, and they learn things, row cropping, chickens, beekeeping, you know, yes, absolutely, we'd love to interact.
And I think if we don't find a way that we're governing this, the bees are going to come. Even if they decide to leave and make their own colony somewhere from a friendly colony, they're going to come, and they're going to find a way to infuse themselves into our community. So the best thing to do is try to find a way that we can help them come safely into the community, and I think that's what you're trying to offer to us, because...
Yes, ma'am.
Whether we approve this or not, that bee's going to come somewhere and make their hives and live, and we need to find a way to make sure that we help them come here safely, and the community not fight them, but receive them.
In addition to the venues I mentioned a moment ago, that we set up and have the observation hive this past year, 2019, on probably ten to twelve different occasions, myself and several other members of the Henry County Beekeepers went into the public schools and the libraries and did presentations for different age groups to educate them about the benefits of the pollinators, and specifically the honeybee, and what they can do for us in general, and the good they serve.
Okay, well, we're going to continue comments with the commissioners at this time. Anything else, Commissioner Thomas? Want to come to Commissioner Clemmons, and I saw Commissioner Wilson with a hand, and then we'll begin to call questions.
Okay, so I agree with what everybody's saying, I think the residential area is risky, they're obnoxious, bee, and you said it best, bees are dangerous. I don't care what kind of bees they are, bee hives can be dangerous, they're...
Bees are no more dangerous than the pit bulls that are currently already in the county.
And we do have an ordinance that you can't have them.
And we're going to allow the board to speak now.
And we have an ordinance that you can't have them. So, you know, in a residential area, in a subdivision, a quarter of an acre of land is too close for bees, and I think, like Commissioner Barnes said, we might need to table this, or think about expanding the size. I think that we have to make decisions, not just for ourselves up here, we've got to think about people that are in our communities, and we're building more and more subdivisions.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Excuse me, excuse me, sir, you're out of order, so we're now going to allow the board to have its conversation, so please just listen at this moment.
I'm done.
Okay, no, please continue your conversation. But yes, right now, I'm calling order, the board is now having discussion, unless they offer a question, okay? Thank you. Okay, so Commissioner Wilson?
Yes? I'm in support of this ordinance, and I would rather live next door to someone that had honeybees than someone that had snakes or dogs or them type of animals, because we do allow those animals in these, in these subdivisions. So me personally, I would rather a beehive be in someone's backyard than dogs, snakes, cats, whatever, so I'm in support of it.
Okay, well, we've heard, I'm calling question now, we've heard from members of the board, I think every one of you, so at this time, right now, the floor is open for a motion.
Chair, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'm going second for discussion.
Okay, so there's a second, so at this time, the floor is now open for discussion.
Ms. Wilson, I understand, would you be receptive to change it to a half acre?
I would like Mr. Harvey to talk more about the quarter acre versus half acre, because I'm not sure the larger the land is really going to keep the bees more confined to a certain area.
Okay, we've got one person to speak at a time, so...
So I'm not, I don't, I don't think raising it to a half an acre is going to really do anything other than, I'm not sure how that's going to solve any problems.
Okay, so I'm going to ask that, the question has come, a clarification of a half an acre? Okay, so I'm going to ask that the question has come, a clarification of a half an acre versus quarter acre. And actually, that you give us a brief response to what difference would a quarter acre versus a half acre make regarding the beehive and backyard beehive? So can you give us a quick response to that?
Yes, ma'am. In my opinion, I don't think it's going to make a substantial difference just because of the foraging activity that the honeybees engage in. If you made it 10 acres, it's not going to discourage them or limit the exposure that they're going to have on the general public.
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate that brief response, okay? Further, Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, I am. My only problem is, I don't think that this should apply to any subdivision in this county. Because I know a lot of people, and we have a lot of land here, we're 320 square miles, and there are a lot of places for bees to pollinate. So it's not like we're the city of Atlanta where it's all cement, or the cab where it's all built out. Henry County is only 20% built out. And I'm pretty sure we already have our share of bees. But I would not support this in any subdivision. I think it would be a nuisance, I think it would be an invasion of privacy. And I think that, you know, you will scare a lot of young children coming out their homes looking at two huge beehives near the fence of their backyard.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons?
And I would like to say, I would, I want to support this, but I would really, if they could take it and not put it in subdivisions, I would be okay with it. I'm concerned about the children that are walking to school as well. There are no sidewalks, and when the bees start to come, kids don't know not to run. Their bees are defensive, and as soon as the child does this, the bees are coming. So I think that when we're talking about subdivisions, I think this is, I have a concern for the citizens of this county talking about allowing bees in subdivisions next door to people's homes and where kids are walking to the school buses. And I know you can't prevent them, and it's not, but when people are harboring them, feeding them, and even though we're saying limited to beehives, I know enough about bees that you can't control the size of the hives. So even though it's two, they can be pretty large and have up to 75,000 bees in them.
Okay, and my comment basically is, I'm in support of beehive, but as it's stated in this resolution, I cannot support it being available throughout the county. I do hope that we can partner somehow with the community to establish some strategic places for beehive. But again, I'm concerned, again, that it's beekeeping, I should say, concerned that it would be open throughout the county in residential communities. So are there any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, there's been a first, and there's been a second motion in support of the resolution. That is before, is all in favor? Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Chair, would you ask a question?
Okay, we've completed the resolution, thank you, Ms. Yoder.
So none of it...
Oh, that was regarding the other items. So basically, the whole resolution did not pass. I know we spent a lot of time on the beekeeping, but there were other items that were spoken, but the resolution as it stated...
That's what I was wondering, is if we could pass it and just remove that section.
The resolution has passed, we may ask that you bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so at this time now, we'll move into the next item. We did have a planning and zoning item, which was RZ 1922, but that has been removed from the agenda. And that was at the property located rezoned from RA to RS at 155 Chambers Road. So again, that one in District 2 has been removed. And we'll now move into the next planning and zoning item, which is a resolution regarding recommendations on an ordinance regarding distance requirements for between small box discount retailers. Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Commissioners? This item before you is an action item regarding the small box discount retailers, but we also would like to get some feedback from you as to what should an ordinance regarding the small box discount retailers include? So we understand that we can consider a distance requirement, but is there anything else that the board may want us to include in such an ordinance amendment?
Small box retailer is?
Yes, sir. So what we're considering is those dollar stores, those dollar stores that may not be as large as, say, a Walmart or Target or something similar to that. But a discount retailer nonetheless, we see them popping up in many different places. It seems like they pop up rather close together.
Well, I can wait. But I know we have, we put an ordinance in place regarding pawn shops a few years ago, and I'm thinking maybe we should do the same thing that we did around pawn shop ordinance. Maybe extend it a little further.
Yes, sir.
Okay, other questions or comments? Commissioner Thomas?
Do you mind sharing that information, Commissioner, about the pawn shops? Because I asked Stacy to start putting this together about the small box retailers because we are being inundated with them. What did, took place so we can know what happened?
Well, Stacy probably can tell us best, but I don't remember the details.
I've got the ordinance, if I may have a moment.
Okay.
It was based on population size. So it wasn't based on a distance requirement, it was actually based on what our county population was. And after so many additional residents, then an additional pawn shop could be added. At the time that we brought that ordinance to the board, we were already at the limit for the number of pawn shops. So we haven't permitted any in a number of years.
And in addition to that, it's also, pawn shops are also prohibited in our highway corridor overlay districts. And if I may, the county manager is absolutely right. We're looking at pawn shop licenses limited to one per 21,182 in population. There is an additional provision that pawn shops shall not be located within 1,000 feet of a similar use. So that's rather close. We may need to look at something that's measured in miles regarding our small box discount retailers.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas still has the floor.
Thank you very, excuse me, thank you very much, because I was not aware of how that worked. But I do know we've been inundated with these stores everywhere. And I've had so many people contact me and say, what are you guys going to do about this? And apparently, that's working with the pawn shops, so that's great. But when we start talking about small box retailers, we're talking about really building the profile of our county, of different things that are coming here. And we want to make sure that we bring a growth structure that attracts the industry that will feed back into the county, basically, and not put us in a position where we're not attracting other very good employers that want to be here. So we need to consider some other things, too. And I'm going to ask this commissioner to think with me through the process. Basically, we're being inundated with a lot of nail shops. In every plaza we look at, we get a nice plaza built, one of the first things we see are these huge nail shops that are coming there. We have a lot of tattoo places that are considering coming to Henry County, that we need to consider how we're going to address them as well. Body piercing as well, that's now coming to the area. So I'm basically saying to this commission, do we want to consider those types of industry as well as we consider this?
Okay.
Nail shops, beauty supply stores.
If I may ask...
Okay, can we, okay, go ahead, Stacy.
Well, I just didn't know if the board wanted to make a differentiation between freestanding types of these stores or if it doesn't matter whether they're part of a shopping center or not.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons has the floor, and then we can answer that question if those who wants to respond.
For me, it is very hard when my constituents ask for why we don't have Whole Foods, or why we don't have Papa Dole's, or why we don't have these things. And what I'm constantly finding myself doing is educating the citizens that it's based on our economics. It's based on the amount of money that we're reporting on our taxes, and we're saying what our level of income is. These companies that are coming in, that are looking for areas that are low-income areas, like these things that we're talking about, are inundating themselves in our community, which is prohibiting us from being able to attract these other larger type of organizations. So I think even if we stop them for a while, put a moratorium on them, do something, we've got to do something over the next couple of years to make sure that we stop it and slow it down because as Henry County grows, they're looking to come here and put these low-income businesses in our communities, which is going to lower our opportunities to be able to attract higher businesses. So I don't think what we're doing is wrong, I think the timing is right. And I don't know if we want to put a time limit on it, or we want to make it forever. But I think that whether they are freestanding or in a plaza, it doesn't matter, they don't need to be in our communities. I think we have enough.
Okay, so anyone else? Okay, well, just a couple of things, again, you were asking for our feedback into this, correct? Well, first of all, we're talking about property value, you know, that we want to continue to maintain in our communities. The question that I have relates back to what does our comprehensive land use plan indicate for these types of businesses that we're talking about? Because I think that's part of what, that may need to be updated as a question. The second thing is, I do agree that whatever we've done, similar to the pawn shops, but something greater, $1,000, $1,000 feet still seems close in proximity. So I just think that it needs to be something greater, as Commissioner Holmes has already stated in that regard. And so that would be the feedback, whether it's freestanding or in a plaza. We just want to make sure that we've got good quality communities. And we also understand that there are businesses that need to develop, but, you know, we need to find that win-win. But when we talk about this type of development, we just don't want them popping up everywhere. We want values to remain very strong here in Henry County, but it needs to be strategic. So again, if we'll go back and any information that you can give as it relates to what do we have in our land use plan, what can we do to make it stronger than what we have for pawn shops is the other thing. And again, we just want to kind of make sure we got that right balance as best that we can.
Yes, ma'am. And just for information's sake, our land use plan and our future land use map is very broad-brushed. For example, that bright red color just is for some kind of commercial, and it's relatively new for us to consider these small box discount retailers as a different animal than simple consumer goods. So we're going to have to break that out and to define what we're talking about and then regulate it.
Right, and thank you. I mean, I understand that, but I guess I should have said, we're looking for that next layer so that it helps us to think about where we're going as well. Okay, so thank you. Okay, Commissioner Wilson, I see you have a question.
Well, do we draw the line? You know, when it comes to nails, pawn shops?
Tape shops.
Yeah.
Tape shops, you know, where do we draw the line? So probably get that recommendation from staff for that as well.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
And, you know, as we work with the county to build a profile of county, and we are proving subdivision with homes at $300,000 to $400,000, they don't want to come out and look next door and see these types of strip malls inundated with those types of stores around them. Because they've invested, these are homeowners that have invested in our county, and they trusted us to allow these subdivisions to be here. And there again, we want to make this resolution strong enough where we know that we won't have approved the subdivision and allowed the homeowners to come and invest in our county. And then we turn around over to the left of them, allow these type of businesses to pop up immediately. And that's what they do. They pop up immediately, get anchored there immediately, and then we are stuck with, what do we do about it? And we're stuck with them, and that's not right. So we definitely want to make sure we strengthen this ordinance.
And again, for information's sake, our ordinances, as far as the way buildings will look, especially in our highway corridor overlay district, applies equally to small box discount retailers as well as any other sort of commercial good. So we're not talking in any way about what these places look like. They're going to look just as good. What we're talking about is the land use itself and where they can be located.
That's exactly right, okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Again, this was really for input from the board as you're evaluating to bring forth an ordinance in the future, correct? Okay, all right. So if there is no other further discussion about it, we appreciate it. And again, commissioners, if we have other thoughts, feel free to reach out to Mr. Rudicel.
Chair, the item does request a resolution. The staff needs direction to proceed with an ordinance amendment. That allows them to bring the ordinance amendment directly to the board rather than through the zoning advisory board up to you. It shaves off a couple of months.
I understand. Okay, all right. Well, hearing that, the floor is now open for a motion to approve, modify the resolution before us, or some guidance to give to the planning and zoning thing.
I would like to make a motion that we move to allow staff to take the information that was given today, create an ordinance for us, and bring it back to the board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that resolution passes forward, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, now moving to our next item, and this, again, is now a discussion only, and we're inviting up our county attorney, Patrick Jockstetter, to discuss the service delivery strategy with the cities.
Good morning. At the board's request, or the board requested a few weeks ago that we provide an update on the status of the service delivery strategy, and I want to do that today. So as you're aware, the service delivery strategy requires us to identify what government provides, what governmental services to the citizens throughout the county. We also have to identify the funding mechanism, whether the services are provided through countywide funds or local city municipal funds. The first thing we do as we look at formulating the service delivery strategy agreement is to identify those countywide services that are provided countywide and funded by countywide revenues. And I'm sorry, the red turned out so difficult to see. These services provided countywide are provided without any regard to municipal boundaries. They are provided across the county as if the county is one comprehensive unit. And what I've done is listed out those services that we have determined to be countywide through our negotiations with the county and the cities. And those are the following: animal control, building and grounds maintenance, cemeteries, housing of city prisoners. There's an asterisk beside a few of these, and I'm going to briefly describe why that's there. For housing of city prisoners, while it is a countywide service, they're housed in our county jail, there is a daily fee that the cities pay to the sheriff. After, I think, the third day, they begin to pay a daily fee to house those prisoners. Transport of city prisoners likewise, for, I believe, the city of Stockbridge, they provided a van, and there is a fee for transporting some of those prisoners. Coroner services are provided countywide, courts and defense services are provided countywide. There's an asterisk beside that one because that only applies to our state courts, state court, superior court, magistrate court. Municipal courts are funded solely by the municipalities. Court security likewise only applies to the superior court, state court, magistrate court. That's provided and funded countywide. The development authority, the Henry County Development Authority is considered to be a countywide project. Some of the cities may or may not have their own development authority or development agencies. Those are provided solely by the municipalities. Elections is provided countywide. I put an asterisk besides that one because our elections board does conduct municipal elections, but those are paid for by the city. There's a fee established, and the cities pay the board of elections to conduct the municipal elections. The county's emergency management agency operates countywide. Our emergency medical services operate countywide. Our environmental health and health department operates countywide. And our fire services operates countywide, and there's an asterisk besides that one as well. We'll talk about that in detail. But while our county fire services do operate countywide, we do have a special arrangement with the city of McDonough, which we'll discuss in detail a little bit later. Library services are provided countywide. Park construction, maintenance, and operations are provided countywide, subject to some limitations. Essentially, where we are today is that those parks that we operate, whether they are owned by the county or the city, they're operated out of county funds, and I'm looking to the county manager to make sure I get this right. There are some parks that are operated by cities, primarily passive parks, kind of pocket parks and things like that. If it's a city-owned passive park, it is funded entirely by the city. Next, the purchase of our fleet, vehicles, equipment, fuels, and supplies, that's funded countywide. Road, street, construction, improvement, maintenance, and transportation planning, that will be a countywide-funded project or countywide-funded service, with a small exception. The way we deal with maintenance of streets is we look back to our L-MIG lists. Every year, counties and cities submit an inventory of roads for L-MIG purposes. And we are servicing, our county tax dollars will go towards those roads that we claim ownership of. The cities claim ownership of roads on their L-MIG lists, and those are funded primarily or exclusively either by those grant funds or by city taxpayers. So we may be crossing into the city boundaries on some of our roads that remain our roads. And there may be a couple of small sections of road that just don't make sense and that we're working... and that we're working those out with the cities. I think, uh, Stockbridge Campground Road or Eagles Landing Parkway, maybe one or two other roads, just make a lot more sense for us to manage or the city to manage, rather than drawing an arbitrary line. Senior citizens' centers and services are provided countywide. Our transit, including senior citizens' transit, is provided countywide, and vehicle equipment, maintenance, and repairs is provided countywide. One thing that's not listed on there, simply because it's not really a service, is your general administration. The general administration of the county, the county management, budget, and those types of budgets, that's a countywide budget, there's no offset for municipal services. So, that's a, a list, an inventory of your countywide services, and again, those are services provided countywide and funded by countywide revenues. Yes, sir?
Yeah, um, cemetery, so, do we have public cemeteries?
We don't have a public cemetery, but we do, we are responsible, and that falls under this, we are responsible for the burial cost of indigent, for some, certain indigent decedents. So, there is a process that people go through where we pay a burial cost, and that is irrespective of the county boundaries, and that's really why we put it in there. We primarily included cemeteries because the cities, I know McDonough and Stockbridge have cemeteries, I'm not sure if Locust Grove or Hampton do, but we wanted to make sure that those cemeteries are provided, are, are solely funded by the city taxpayers, to the extent they're funded by taxpayer funds, but really for purposes of cemeteries, we treat those as more our, of our indigent burial obligation. So, next, there are unincorporated services, and these are services that are, that are provided only in the unincorporated areas of the county, and for these services, they are funded only by revenues generated in the unincorporated areas, and that, that requires the creation of a service district. And you'll hear a lot of talk about this when we bring the, the actual agreement back to you, that we will be creating special service districts. And one of the service districts that we will create will include only the unincorporated areas of the county, and those are, that is to accommodate for services that are provided only for the benefit of unincorporated areas, and to the extent they're taxpayer-funded, only unincorporated taxpayers pay for them. So, those services include the following: building permits and inspections, again, that's primarily funded by fees and expenses incurred when you make those applications. Code enforcement is provided only in the unincorporated area. Now, that excludes animal control, we, we break that in half. Your comprehensive plan, every time you redo your comp plan, that is an unincorporated expense. Now, we do, every time we create a new comp plan, we do approach the cities, and we do make the offer to join in with them, and we'll continue to do that. But in the absence of an agreement, the Henry County Comprehensive Plan will be funded solely by county revenues. Development plan review, GIS and mapping, uh, GIS and mapping, we used to provide it for everybody, it's now provided for the unincorporated areas, although the cities do occasionally buy specific services from the GIS department. Your planning and zoning services, soil erosion control and inspections, and stormwater management, these are the services that are provided only in unincorporated areas, and those are the services for which local governments or the city governments would receive, the city taxpayers would not pay a tax for funding those services. There are a few services, which I've called special district services, that are provided only to specific areas of the county, but it might, they might include one or more cities. So, it might be the unincorporated area and a city, or more than one city, but not all of them. The first one we talked about a little earlier is fire services. Fire services are provided in all of the unincorporated areas of Henry County, and we also provide fire service to Hampton, Locust and, Locust Grove, and Stockbridge. We provide some si- fire services to McDonough, even though McDonough has its own fire department. So, we will be creating two special fire districts. There'll be one that will include the entire county except McDonough, and then there will one that will include the county and McDonough. So, it's kind of a double, a double dip to make sure we get McDonough included, because where we are today with respect to McDonough is that we will continue to provide sort of the auxiliary fire services that we do for the city of McDonough, we service some areas of the city, and McDonough residents will pay fifty percent of the county millage rate, fifty-five percent, my fault, fifty-five percent of the county millage rate towards fire services. We will continue the existing mutual aid and automatic aid agreements with the city of McDonough. Police services are provided, again, it, through a special service district all over the unincorporated areas of Henry County and the city of Stockbridge. And what that will do is, city of Stockbridge residents will pay the exact same millage rate that unincorporated residents pay for the provision of police services, and we will continue to provide special services to the other cities upon request. We're not going to, we're not going to leave any city hanging if they need, if they need our assistance. So, that's sort of where we are today, and that's sort of a, a really big picture. The next steps will be, we have to create intergovernmental agreements for all of those services that I sort of mentioned separately. Things like elections, how the cities pay the county or pay the elections board, we will provide, create an intergovernmental agreement for police services, for fire services, and all of those services that we do sort of cross the boundary with special, special arrangements. And that will include, uh, the tax commissioner collects a fee for collecting city property taxes, the sheriff is paid for housing certain prisoners, all of those will be accommodated either in your intergovernmental agreement or an agreement between those separate officials and the cities. We will return these agreements to the Board of Commissioners for approval. There will be a joint resolution that both this board and all of the city councils adopt, and that once that's done, it'll be submitted to the Department of Community Affairs, and we'll be, we'll be done with community, with, uh, service delivery strategies. We expect that to happen within the next month or so. We are at the point where we're exchanging the joint resolution, I've got a draft of that I received actually this morning, so we'll be going through that, making some, some small revisions. We've got intergovernmental agreements already negotiated for fire services and police services, we're just working out some of the details on those, and that's where we are. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to address them, if there's any I can't answer, I'll turn them over to the county manager.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Okay, all right.
Fifty-five percent is a reduction, so they'll have a forty-five percent that they pay forty-five.
They'll pay forty-five percent.
A reduction of fifty-five.
Okay. That's what it is.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
That's on fire services with McDonough.
Yes, fire services.
Thank you for the clarification, thank you for the update, okay?
Okay.
All right, um, thank you again. All right, we'll now move into the public, um, comment section of our board meeting. How many public comments do we have today?
We have four public comments today. Doty Kayson, Bill Tony, Ronald Mitchell, and Robert Colpeck. Doty Kayson is first.
Okay, well, um, this is the time where we welcome, um, our citizens to, um, to voice their county-related opinions. Again, these are individuals that have signed up prior to the beginning of the meeting, and again, I hope that you've read the public guidelines that we have to please address the board, not individuals, you have five minutes. And then we also ask the commissioners that we allow the, um, uh, public, um, comment individuals to, to, to speak without interruption. And again, all co- public comments are duly noted, so, um, we'll begin with you. Please state your name again, please, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners, um, Chair Wood. My name is Doty Kayson, and I serve as chair of the board for Connecting Henry. Earlier this morning, you heard, um, some comments made by the county manager in regards to some recent updates that we've made, um, to our organization, and I want to address those changes, as well as speak to you about some of the accomplishments that we made this past year. So, for the sake of time, I'm going to read this, I apologize, but I get long-winded and probably need to stay on focus. "I was appointed as chair in September two thousand and nineteen, at the same time our executive director Susan Crumbly retired from her position. Because of her retirement, I felt our immediate attention needed to be placed on board development and making sure that we had a good understanding of how the organization operates. From these actions, new committees were created concerning marketing and fundraising, financial planning, and strategic planning. I also placed pressure on each board member, asking them to reflect on their position. I wanted to make sure that each individual board member would have the necessary time to serve the organization's needs, but I also wanted to make sure they had a passion for Connecting Henry and our community. During this fact gathering initiative, we reviewed our bylaws, making sure we understood each line item, as well as discussing each item's effectiveness. There were a few items that we identified and had hoped to address with the county manager, and this year potentially seeking out the best way to change them. During this discovery process, we utilized the Connecting Henry staff, but we also reached out to our Georgia Family Connection Coordinator, making sure that we were fulfilling the requirements for our grant funds. And then just days before the Christmas holiday, we were notified that we were not in compliance with their grant requirements because our bylaws allowed a governing body, Henry County, to make decisions for our nonprofit organization. This was startling news to us because our bylaws had not changed since two thousand and fifteen. We were at risk of losing this large grant, so we felt like we needed to react quickly and move forward with the bylaw updates that had already been discussed amongst our board. As you review these changes, um, in the very near future, I imagine, it may seem as if we were acting out of defiance, but in no way was this our objective, but rather a means to protect our grant funds, as we were told that the changes were necessary and needed to be made by the end of our fiscal second quarter. In the two thousand and nineteen calendar year, Connecting Henry made an impactful contribution to our community. Eighteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars were spent assisting Henry County residents through our benevolence program. Of those funds, ten thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars were distributed during the fourth quarter under our newly-appointed leadership. In two thousand and nineteen, twenty-four students graduated from our SWAG GED program, and we currently have a hundred and twenty-six students enrolled working to earn their GED. In July of two thousand and nineteen, we launched our new work experience program with over twenty thousand dollars already spent in salaries for the thirty students that have already participated in this program. We had twelve students graduate from our inaugural maintenance certification program, and seven students graduate from our inaugural guest service certification program. Connecting Henry brought the LiHeat program to Henry County this year as well, or in two thousand and nineteen, offering heating and cooling assistance to many of our residents. Our community cares toy drive took place again this year, um, thanks to the assistance of the Henry County, um, employees and government, and with that program, we were able to provide Christmas for eight hundred and fifty-six children. Now, I know many of you may have questions, um, in regards to these changes, you may not have seen all of the changes at this time, and so as those items are rolled out to you, I welcome any comments, any questions, any concerns that you may have. Our goal is to continue to partner with Henry County, our county manager, and each of you, our commissioners, to serve the needs of the residents. We are working to create a strategic plan, and we hope to build that plan based on the needs that each of you see in your districts. So, I thank you for this time, um, and again, I welcome any comments that you may have, and I look forward maybe to meeting with each one of you one-on-one, so you can help us build out that strategic plan.
Thank you. Okay, we're in the public comment section, so we'll move now to the next one and allow you to follow up later. Thank you. Okay?
Bill Tony, McDonough, Georgia. I, I'd like to ask Ms. Wood, yeah, we had some changes in the public comment guidelines. Could you possibly explain that before I get started?
Um, this is our public comment section, Tony, so please just address the board according to what statements you'd like to make. Thank you, sir.
Well, there was changes made, and, uh, used to, you could, uh, prior boards, you could talk to the commissioners, they didn't answer you back, but you couldn't, now you can't even recognize a name in here, so I think it was very unfair. Uh, I feel like I need to finish the thing we started about the house over at Nash Farm. We were talking about, uh, the two hundred dollars a month these folks were staying, the employees were staying at the house at Nash Farm. I pulled up, uh, a number of them, this right here was this, an average of eleven hundred dollars a month, just saying, I just need to put that to rest. Normally, when you, in government, I would figure anything else, that somebody would give you a backup call or a response of some sort. To this day, I have not received any, any comments or anything else, or, uh, thank you, maybe for bringing it to the attention of the board. I'm the type of person to where, when I see something, I say something. This tire, I, I, I was involved in an accident, the police officer came. Look at that tire, it's down to the wear bars. Now, this has been a while back, I brought it to the attention of the board. Normally, somebody would come back and say, "Thank you for doing that." That happens to be the car. But anyway, you know, you're, this board does not appreciate, they don't want the people to come forward, I don't feel like. It, it's kind of a shame that you have people that care in this county, and they do, they want to do the best, and they want the best for the county, and this is just a, I don't know, it's a dead board, you know? Y'all don't talk to anybody, you don't do anything, you just sit there and wait for the guy to do his five minutes and pray that he don't say nothing that you're getting trouble about. This is a warehouse, and I'd like for people to, to know that when you have a warehouse like this, you look at, now, this one is nine hundred seventy-nine thousand, this is for rent, or just, it just got rented, this is old, uh, Toys R Us, uh, distribution center. You look at, this thing is set up for nine, uh, for three hundred and forty-nine auto par- uh, parking places, five hundred and twenty-nine trailer spaces, and two hundred extra. Now, you think about all the warehouses that's coming into the county, think about how many tractor trailers that's bringing in here, and y'all just keep voting them in. I don't get it. Y'all need to look at the, the, the infrastructure and just figure out that this isn't something that you, you need to have done. When I was looking at, um, the guidelines change you did, I'd like to make a suggestion that you add at the end of the evening meeting, add an hour of question and answer. When y'all are running for office, you want to talk to people, but you don't want to hear the problems. At least give something to where y'all will speak up. Y'all sit there like nothing, and it just, all it does is aggravate everybody else. I get calls all the time, and I like, I've only got forty seconds left. That right there is in McDonough. This lady, Amanda Reeves, put that there. There's citizens out here that care. These are the kind of people that need to be recognized, these are the kind of people that make things happen. They're not here for the glory, they're for the glory of God, to do, do things like this. They feed the hungry. If y'all, I don't know if y'all even know about this or not, but I saw them putting food in this thing Friday night, and that's, if you need food, you go there, you get it. If you have extra food, you put it in it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next individual?
Next speaker is Ronald Mitchell.
Chair Wood, I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I got two safety situations. Requesting that Henry County allow a citizen safety committee to report dangerous conditions on county roadways. The second one is, Henry County take proper cautions for crossing at southwest corner of Gardner Road, since the road crosses my property. Okay, I've, uh, submitted a claim to the legal department of Henry County on January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, that explains proof that I own the property that the road runs through. I have to cross the road with my tractors and everything, and I have no street markings, I have no signs or anything except a tractor sign. They come over the hill speeding, all right? Here's the statement. Why is there no right-of-way deed for three-eight-eight Gardner Road? April eleventh, nineteen ninety-four, right-of-way deed, recorded acquisition in southwest corner of three-eight-eight Gardner Road from William and Robert Hinton without proof of ownership. Value concepts letter dated December the second, nineteen ninety-eight, acknowledged that there was a mistake made. Henry County committed to resolve the situation discussed in- Henry County committed to resolve the situation discussed in June Wood Chair letter dated February the twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, and Patrick Jossetter verbal agreements, most recent of May the twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, to possibly fund eight hundred dollars to retain a surveyor to help resolve the location of the southwest corner of three-eight-eight Gardner Road and southwest corner of Landlock one-fifty-nine, which is the same. Six registered surveys of three-eight-eight Gardner Road, beginning with May nineteen forty-six, submitted previously, clearly shows Gardner Road inside a Mitchell property at Landlock one-fifty-nine corner, southwest corner. What progress has been made on this situation? And this is a personal comment. Was the mistake so big that this situation can't be resolved? Okay, the documents have already been submitted, and the legal department has them. I started working on this in Jan, in nineteen ninety-eight, when the right-of-way was issued through that property. But the right-of-way deed was made in nineteen ninety-four to another landowner of my property. And I've got six surveys showing it's my property. I filed a claim on January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, with the legal department. I have no response, nobody's called me back or nothing. And the last comment was made a few minutes ago. The last conversation I had with the legal department was on, let's see, February the twenty-second of two thousand and nineteen, when I got the letter from Chairman Wood stating they were gonna try to do something about it. And Patrick Jossetter verbal agreements, which is most recent, of May the twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen. I haven't, it has nothing been done since then. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Robert Kolpeck.
Robert Kolpeck, McDonough, Georgia. I'm gonna give you an update on Cochran Park. Very proud that the four commissioners have voted for this to be repaired. That's what it used to look like. As you can see, there's some very nice progress going on to the properties. And just wanna say again, thank you for putting it together. Looks like we're gonna be playing ball in the spring. Not sure if we ever got to the bottom, what happened to that public safety sign, but when I looked at it, it's been re-erected. It might've just been a windstorm, but just wanting everybody to know that it's a beautiful sign, and it fell over, but it looks like it was put back up, so not sure if the police were involved or anybody had to do any repairs to it. That's all I got for today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, and thank you all for your comments today. And that concludes our public comments section at this time. We'll now move into the next part of our agenda for today. And at this time, we will discuss the approval of our minutes for the December tenth call meeting regarding the transportation improvement plan, and then also the minutes regarding the December seventeenth call meeting regarding the mega site, whether there are any changes or revisions to those minutes. Seeing none, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Vote to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Those minutes are, are approved. We're now moving to the commissioners' comments section. Are there any comments? I see Commissioner Wilson at this time. Yes?
No, I'm good. So I'll just make sure.
Oh.
I got the bank, right?
Okay, yes.
The intersection of Bill Gardner Parkway and Lester Mill Road is being controlled now, only two stop signs, which is on either side of Bill Gardner Parkway on the Lester Mill side. Last month, there was four accidents, three of them were injuries. So I think we need to move to the next step, trying to make this intersection safer, is put a four-way stop, and then look at putting a signal, a signal there as well. I know the county whip, for the last two years, they went and tried to make all the improvements with double stop signs, double stop ahead signs, flashing stop signs, and with the flashing intersection signs. That don't seem to be working. So, yeah, if we can move forward and get something together to put that four-way stop in place. My second thing is, I'd like to direct the county managing staff to look at our current multifamily sprinkler code and bring back some recommendations to the board. That's all I have.
Okay. So Commissioner Clemens and Commissioner Holmes, and then myself.
Sherry, I didn't hear you address, well, no, we talked about, two weeks ago, about a letter should be going out to all residents of Henry County that have a lease in the county's property, and they were supposed to be notified that their lease was being looked at and would be renegotiated. I want the citizens to know that we did hear them. I have asked for you guys to make that public, that these people have been placed on notice, that their lease is being reviewed and will be taken a look at. But it's not just one, it's every lease that's in the county. So if you would comment on that, and before you comment on that, I wanna also say that the Henry County Development Authority is partnering with the Board of Commissioners and the Georgia Department of Labor. We've got workforce development and ARC also involved. There's a huge Henry County Community Career Expo that's happening on February nineteenth from four to seven P.M. at Dutch Town High School. And we've got several industries that are participating, from our medical industries, manufacturing industrial, professional services, everybody will be out, and there will be a community expo. And we do not have representation from the county, so I see you looking at Harold. If there are any openings in the county, police department, fire department, government, we would definitely like to have a booth there from the county as well, so that we can have that. Did you know about that, Sherry?
Yes, ma'am. I've been in coordination with Leah Brown with the Development Authority and the Department of Labor, and asked if it was too late for us to have our H.R. recruiter participate in that fair as well.
So I have, actually, I started this with them months ago, so I'm, I've been putting this together, and they are expecting us. I just committed us without, and, and...
We will be there.
Okay. We need to make sure that we have the county there, but also, I think Melissa made sure that our logo was on the flyer that was going out, so we are, should be fully participating with this.
Absolutely.
But please, I'll comment, because I want the public to know what we are doing about those leases. It did not fall on deaf ears, and I hope they have received the notice.
So we actually had a meeting on yesterday, our staff, to gather all of the lease agreements. There are some properties that we do not have a lease agreement for, or the lease agreement has expired. And one of the things that I charged staff with was seeing if we could pull any additional information. Just for clarification, it is for every facility, not just residential. It's for D-Fax, Connecting Henry, any agency, American Legion, any agency that is currently occupying a county facility. So it's my hope that that letter will go out today. I think the timing was perfect, because in the presentation this morning made by our auditor, he spoke to the lease agreements, and there being a lot of concerns with the language that's currently in some of our agreements that may not be in compliance. So that letter will go out. I wanna make sure the county attorney takes a look at it as well, and then we will get that out this week.
Okay. And so I'll say in front of Patrick, I'm disappointed, because I asked two weeks ago that those people be placed on notice, that their lease was being investigated, looked at, and that would be renegotiated, and that still, the letter has not went out. We don't have to wait to get all the leases to let the people know that, don't have a legal lease, know that their lease is not legal. And so there are some illegal leases that we've already found out about, and I don't think we should have to wait on getting all the leases to let those people know. So I think that we need to, at least send an, I think it's courteous to send an email out to let people know publicly where we are with it.
So Commissioner Clemens, I apologize that you're disappointed, but staff is gonna get it done. Thank you.
Let's see, after Commissioner Holmes.
For years, there have been recreational shooting in North Henry County, to the point where when my grandkids are at the house, or when my wife and I are sitting up eating dinner, the, the sound is so loud, we kinda take cover away from a window. Recently, I had a citizen send me an email where they found one of the bullets in their house. And so I asked the county manager to take a look at that ordinance, to see if we can change it before somebody, before somebody gets hurt. I mean, it's not the first time somebody has told me that, you know, they found a bullet in their house. So people up in the Fairview area are afraid. I know that people have the right to have guns, but, you know, those bullets fly a long way. And given the fact that we're becoming more populated and more homes are being built, there's not a lot of room for bullets to be flying in that particular area. So I asked Sherry to put together an ordinance. I know if other commissioners wanted to continue in their district, I don't have a problem with it, but I'm asking that we change the ordinance, at least in my community, to keep our citizens safe. So Sherry, can you give us an update on where we are with that?
Yes, sir. We met last week to discuss it, and staff is preparing that. We will try to have it on the agenda for March. Because the directive has been given from, from the district commissioner, we don't have to go to the zoning advisory board for it, so we can bring that back to the board for you all to consider. Right now, the ordinance that's gonna be presented will be countywide, but again, if it's something that you all wanna look at in the respective districts, I would suggest that it's countywide, just from an enforcement perspective, but we'll certainly bring that to the board for the meeting in March.
Thank you.
Okay. Other comments from the board? Okay. Just as a note, Commissioner Clemens, I know for the workforce development, there is a representative that Henry County has to have involved in workforce, workforce development from ARC, and the chamber's recommended that, and so I sent an email recently to also include that person, if you don't mind, into that. And then the other thing, I wanna thank the staff again for, for what they're doing to help us come up with these comprehensive countywide strategies, so that, again, we are consistent with strategy, so I want to include and commend you on that. I do want to, again, address the public comment aspect of it. This board has approved our public comments, and we have an ordinance that does exist regarding that, and that was a board decision. The, the recent comments that have been made and the, that I have stated have regarded the decorum. Again, this is a public meeting. We definitely welcome all of our citizens to engage in our meetings, and also just to contact us as well. Again, we just want to make sure that you have issues, to please address those as a board, not as individuals. I will say that if I've dropped the ball on any response that I needed to give to anyone, I will accept full responsibility to, of it, but please bring it to my attention so that we can follow up. I do know that I try to respond back to individuals. I also have opened my doors. Anyone that has requested a meeting to talk to me about anything specific that they want to address, especially regarding to me, and I'm sure the other commissioners are open to that, that door is open. There has not been one invitation that I have declined for anyone wishing to speak. Now, the timeline by which you request that meeting may be somewhat of a challenge, but we definitely do make sure that we do respond back and try to respond to our citizens when they do reach out. So again, I wanted to, again, just, again, welcome our citizens to stay engaged. This is your government. We're here to, to listen, and again, many times, we may not agree, but again, we definitely deserve to give you the respect to listen. So thank you much for that. So as we now, I do wanna make one other comment. We are about to begin our budget discussions, and I wanna, again, commend the staff that we are, one, starting this earlier this year. I mean, every year, it seems to get better. Of course, I would always say, you know, how can we start sooner? But also, thank you for including everyone into this process, and our citizens who are welcome here are welcome to, to definitely join in, as we will move to Conference Room B in a few moments to continue discussions, much like a workshop regarding the budget. So are there any other comments or questions before the board? And we will adjourn the meeting from the budget discussion. So are there any other comments or from the board? Okay. Well, again, we'll now move to the Conference Room B and continue discussions regarding the budget. Thank you.